Good afternoon and welcome to the September 25th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I'd like to call us to order and go over a few housekeeping items. First of all, if you have a cellphone with you, please silence or turn it off. If you're here to speak on an item, please fill out one of these forms available outside and provide it to either Elena or Jared down here below. When that item is heard, you'll be called upon. Please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item with a large number of people, we ask that you elect a representative to share your group's concerns, and in those instances, some additional time will be considered for that person. If you choose to speak separately on an item, we ask that you do your best to limit repetitious comments to those that we had not heard previously, or just want to try and limit extensive and repetitious comments. Please direct all your comments or questions to us, the commission. If you have questions for either your staff or the applicant, the commission will make sure that you get a response to those. Lastly, we appreciate everyone's presence here today and the time that you took away from your other obligations to be here and be heard. We kindly ask for your cooperation in upholding the decorum in the meeting. While we encourage the expression of opinions, we ask that you refrain from any disrespectful behavior, including disruptions from the gallery, personal attacks, and otherwise other disruptions. So with that, we are ready to begin with the receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes of September 11th, 2025.
A motion to receive the minutes. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Bear with us while our system gets up and running. Do we need a voice vote from anyone? From everyone? Oh, from Commissioner La Forge, we need a voice vote on the minutes.
I vote aye.
All right, and the minutes are received. Item three, is continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 23, case PUD 2101, defer to October 9th. Item 23, case SPUD 1760, request to defer to October 9th. Item 25, case PC 10980, defer to October 23rd. Item 26, case PUD 2084, defer to October 23rd. Item 27, case PC 10987, defer to November 13th. Item 28, case PUD 2089, defer to December 11th. And item 29, case SPUD 1756, has been withdrawn.
Okay. Just confirm if anyone is here to speak on any of those items? All right, seeing none, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the continuance request as read.
I have a motion to approve the uncontested requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the uncontested requests are approved. New requests.
Item 10, case SPUD 1755, request to defer to October 9th. Item 16, case CPA 2025-7, defer to October 9th. Item 17, case PUD 2090, defer to October 9th. And item 19, case PUD 2087, defer to October 9th.
All right. Do I have a motion, or excuse me, is there anyone here to speak on the new requests? I have one gentleman. So this, this item is going to be deferred to the October 9th. You'll have the opportunity to speak on it then, if you, if that's okay. All right, very good. All right, just need a motion for the new requests.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new continuance request as read.
I have a motion to approve the new requests. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the new requests are approved. All right, brings us to the public hearing portion of the docket, and we'll begin with the consent items.
Item 1, KC E 1153, application to close a 312-foot portion of the platted east-west utility easement in Block 1 of Warwick Plaza Edition, east of Warwick Drive and south of northwest 122nd Street. Item 2 is KC 7758, final plat of High Wasi Ridge, and this is located south of southeast 44th Street and east of South High Wasi Road.
All right. Just need a motion on the consent items.
Move to approve the consent items as read.
I have a motion to approve the consent items as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the consent docket passes. Next, we are on to our items for individual consideration, and we'll begin with item 3.
This is KC 7760, final plat of the enclave at Oakdale Revised, located north of East Hefner Road and west of North Coltrane Road, along with the variance to the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Mark Zidzow, Johnson &amp; Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a property that you recently saw and approved. It is in a different configuration than the original approval in December of 2024. The street network has changed slightly. We agree with the staff report in that they recommend approval. We are requesting a variance which this board previously granted in December of 2024. That was stub streets to the north, south, and to the west. To the west are large, single-family lots. To the south would be kind of the boneyard, graveyard of Frontier City. This is a private development in that the streets are private and gated, so there'd be no opportunity for that connection to occur. So again, this board previously granted those variances, and we'd ask that you do the same on the revised layout.
Commissioner Harrison, this is your ward. I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners?
I just wanted to confirm, so there is a lot removed, so you are providing a street stub to the north?
No, we'd request that we're not providing any street stubs.
No street stubs?
Yeah, the track to the north is a fairly narrow track, but with ours being a private street gated subdivision, our preference would be that we do not have to stub.
Any other questions, comments? All right, this TE 2 is a variance, so we would need to take a motion for that first.
Okay, I recommend approval for the variance of section 5.3.1, point D, point 5.
I have a motion to approve the variance as read. Commissioner Harrison.
It's not letting me do it. There we go.
There we go. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And variance is approved. Now the, the item.
So looking for a motion for the, the question is, do they have any complaints with the TEs?
Sorry?
Do we have any, are we, are you okay with all the TEs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Not, I recommend approval.
We have a motion to recommend the item subject to the technical evaluations. Commissioner Harrison, it's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Approve the item.
Thank you.
Item 4.
Item 4 is KC 7759, final plat of Blackberry Ridge, Phase 2, located south of southeast 44th Street and west of South High Wasi Road.
David Jones for the applicant. What we have is a subdivision as far as the local RA 2 that complies, and we have a couple of issues associated with an access point that we're working through at this point. You'll see one of the TEs references, southeast 52nd Street. We have a belief on our side as to southeast 52nd Street being a public street. That's still being finalized and determined to be the case. So other than that, if the commission has any questions along those lines, I'd be glad to answer.
Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. I do have two signed up to speak.
All right. And if it is public, which it has to be to connect to it, do you agree to improve it to city standards to?
I'm sorry, it is public, you say?
I said if it is deemed public, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, bring it up to the city standards.
And we accept and agree to all the TEs and the improvement of that street to city standards.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let's hear from the people signed up.
Okay.
I imagine it's about that route.
Tina Murray.
Mainly.
Hi, I'm Tina Murray. I'm at 12737 Southeast 52nd Street, and my concern is where they're wanting to, the street to go onto 52nd Street is right across the top of my property. And my property has a 45-degree angle going downhill. So if they start tearing up all that hard pack, all of that's going to start running down, which I already have a lot of drainage issues. They have already tore up that area last year, and I've had a lot of drainage issues ever since they've done that. And I don't have a problem with the addition going in next to my property, but coming across the top of my property and taking off that hard pack for everything to run down with no compensation, and my driveway is right on 52nd Street. So I don't see how they're going to be able to do the street without reconfiguring my whole driveway.
They most likely will have to. And if it is a public street, that your driveway will be replaced. Also comes with that would be drainage along the road, so that, in theory, should help you out quite a bit as far as drainage is concerned, once it's built to city standards.
Okay.
And, and just a point of clarification, driveways would be replaced to the right-of-way line?
Right, to the right-of-way, yeah, not your entire driveway, but to the right-of-way line.
Okay, and then my other concern is that they make that into a public street because there's only six homes on that street, and they have been forever. It's going to have, most people divert and go down my driveway. I have that problem right now in the middle of the night. It's a very sandy property, so they get to the bottom of the driveway, they get stuck because there's no turnaround coming down the driveway, because it's just like a mountain switchback.
Right.
And, you know, that's a concern too, is how am I going to block this excess traffic from trying to come down my driveway all the time?
Well, if it's not a public roadway right now, it will take quite a bit more to get it to be one, and we wouldn't be able to handle that here. And this wouldn't be able to be built if that weren't the case.
Okay.
So you'll, if it's not deemed public, then you'll either, this case will go away, or you'll hear a lot more because they'll have to apply for an easement all the way to High Wasi Road, and that will involve you in compensation and further.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Murray.
I'm Elizabeth Banks, and I live at 12833 Southeast 52nd Street. And I've lived on that street since 1960. So I've seen a lot of changes, I've seen development, and I'm not against development. But I am against a developer that wants to push his development onto neighbors. So our street is basically, and I've sent pictures for you guys to see, our street is basically a one-lane road. And if you want to pass, you don't unless you go in the ditch. All of the water that comes off of the hill where this street would start, all of the water comes down 52nd Street. There are very few adequate ditches. My property is down at the bottom of the hill, and I get the brunt of all the water coming off the hill, and also from the south, everything going toward Hog Creek. Currently, we have a 50-foot easement. City standards are 60-foot easements. So we would be required as the homeowners to provide additional road easement. We're talking about 10-foot because we've already been advised by the developer that they would not bother the people on the south side of the road where the utility poles are. They don't want to deal with that. So that they would try to get the easement on the north landowners. 10-foot doesn't sound like a lot, but when you go the full length of your property, taking out fences, we have a setback for our driveway that would make it inadequate to come off the street and park at my gate to open it. So my gate would have to be changed. I have three gates. My neighbor also has an offset. He has an electric gate. So all of that would need to be moved and changed. I have a tree that's on my fence line that was the first live Christmas tree that my children had on this property. So it's been there since 81, and it's within that 10-foot easement. So we would lose our Christmas tree. My septic system comes off the front of my home and goes out toward the current fence. The 10-foot additional easement would go into my lateral lines. So this is not a simple thing of giving easement. My fences would be gone. My trees and my shrubberies along my fence lines would be gone. I would be losing privacy. My dad always said, "Good fences make good neighbors." And I hope you take that into consideration, because we have a developer that wants to basically make us a part of his development. He has a creek that runs across the property, and you would think that he would have done his due diligence before he purchased the property. Because EPA has requested that he build a bridge across that creek, he has decided that he wants to take our property. It's not our responsibility to make up his construction cost. Please, please consider the residents on southeast 52nd Street that did not ask to be a part of his development.
Commissioner Privet, any, anything else to add?
What's that?
I, I do, I have a question quickly for Public Works. Is there anything in city standards that allows for a 50-foot right-of-way? I know 60 is the standard. Is there any exceptions made to that?
No, current standard is under our Public Works. I think current standard is 50, 60-foot. I mean, we can look at, but there's no exception.
If this is a public street, that easement is established now. Is it established at 50 or 60, or do we know?
It will be rural, which is 60-foot right-of-way, but we were not able to determine if public or private. There is a roadway easement that was, these deeds show that, but we couldn't find any dedication to Oklahoma City.
Definitely not being maintained by the city then, right? Okay. So, I mean.
I, I mean, I can, I can tell you, I mean, my, my thought is that if we don't know whether it's public or private right now.
Right. I mean, what's the point of the application?
I don't think we should be approving this until we have that determined.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the point of the application going any further if there's not, because the whole thing's mute if there's no public access.
If this wants to come back at a future time when they say, hey, we know this is public, and, you know?
I agree.
So.
Yeah.
So is the applicant willing to take a continuance?
From the standpoint of the roadway, we've got pictures of city crews at times maintaining that roadway. We've got easements on all the deeds showing the easement through those areas on all lots to our property line for service.
What does the easement with?
We've got, they're in the, all written in 25-foot either side, and all the deeds for all the property for those residences on 52nd Street. The sign, the street is signed by City of Oklahoma City as 52nd Street. Just recently, looking at the private drive map for the area, the street did not show up on the private drive map for that area. So we're of firm belief that based upon what was committed as, in the past, and this is an area that was basically annexed by the city from the county at one point in time, okay? So there's some loss of data, loss of information, loss of translation in that point in time. Our roadway expectation is not to do the type of work that's going to require the damage or incorporation or impact to any of those areas outside the roadway itself. So the loss of trees, loss of fences, and those sort of items, we don't believe will occur. We do know that one of two options exist in that area, curb section, which allows for a 50-foot street right-of-way, which exists at that time, or if it goes with barred ditch, then it requires 60. So to that area, to the area that we're just looking at hooking up and extending to in this development, basically lies with those easements providing access to our property. Hog Creek has a floodway across it that is not allowing for a structure to cross them from a drainage standpoint. So, you know, it's our belief that that roadway is public based upon all the evidence. County assessor's office shows a easement through that area for all those lots going, servicing our property. From an access standpoint, can be blocked off, so that was done. That's why those 25-foot easements are in all the deeds for all those properties on 52nd Street. So, you know, do I want a continuance? Would I think that that was necessary? No, the TE says basically very clearly that TE, excuse me, I'll read it to you. You've seen it, I'm sure. The TE 3 basically says that approval is recommended pending TE 3, which is the determination, the final determination of the roadway. That is in process through both meetings that we've had with the planning department, meeting we had with engineering early on, and it's right, it's very convoluted and not a whole lot of information to back up one way or the other. But we're looking to move forward with the project as far as addressing the TEs, and I know that the developer has legal counsel that has been looking at that aspect and discussing it and trying to figure out exactly what that roadway is, one way or the other. But we believe it to be public without hesitation. And it shows clearly through survey, through county assessor's documents and everything else, all the way to the, our property line, from High Wasi.
You have something to add?
If it is going to be curb and gutter, I think it's acceptable for 50-foot right-of-way.
Curb and gutter would, would allow for 50-foot right-of-way?
And the drainage has to be addressed as part of it.
So you could work within the confines of the existing 50-foot and no fence?
We believe that could very well help the young lady's concerns with the water that she's getting. Now, you know, we're just putting in a short stretch of roadway up there, and yes, we're going to run off a little bit more water, but the water that she's getting now, if she's having a flooding problem now, that's not derived from anything that we're doing or have done. That's existing condition, and that's a problem, you know, in a big picture sense that they could be dealing with or should have been dealing with. Again, we believe this to be a public road. It's signed that way, it's been managed that way recently with maintenance crews bringing in rock, and it is narrow. It's in poor condition at this time, and I think everything we do is going to be an advancement and an improvement to that, not a negative.
And if it's determined public road, we will also, it needs to be considered drainage, if there's color, it needs to be designed or whatnot, and they cannot make it worse on the, what it is existing to the neighbors.
We have plans into the city for review now, not incorporating the improvements. Actually, the developer had offered to make those improvements early on and was rejected by the tenants there in the subdivision, but with the TE and everything requiring it, we're, we're definitely on board with doing that. So I would like to personally move forward with that information and hopefully the knowledge that we're going to, you know, again, the 50-foot and all the concerns associated with all the damage that would occur by having to widen this to 60-foot is really mute because we won't have to widen it to 60-foot. It'll remain at 50-foot as is. No fences get damaged, no trees get damaged, no septic systems get damaged, and down the road we go.
Okay.
I think, you know, add that as a TE, 50-foot, just to make sure that it.
Curb and gutter.
Convert for curb and gutter 50-foot right-of-way, and then I think I'd be okay with it.
Okay. And Mr. Jones, do you have contact information for the neighbors on the street?
The developer does. He's been in contact with one of the residents.
I would strongly encourage that as this moves forward, that you keep them up to date on impacts to their property.
Right. And we're glad to do that. To be honest, we haven't been very well received in that sense, you know, out there. But yeah, we're more than glad to have any sit-down, any meeting, any discussion in the field, in the office, with any of the residents.
Well, and I think that comes from the fear that they felt that they were going to lose fences, they were going to lose vegetation.
Fair enough, sure.
They were going to be severely impacted on their, on their property. Whereas if all these improvements do occur within a public right-of-way, and that right-of-way is there at 50 feet, I think that changes things.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Nope.
All right. Commissioner Privet?
Okay. I'll move approval of the application subject to the current TEs plus adding a TE that states that the road improvements will not be greater than 50-foot right-of-way curb and gutter.
That road improvements will be done within the 50-foot right-of-way and be curb and gutter?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to the existing TEs...
For the existing 52nd Street, yes.
For 52nd Street, okay. Per the existing TEs, and the TE is read in by Commissioner Privet. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item is approved. Item five.
This is case number CE 1152, application to close the South Douglas Boulevard right-of-way between Southeast 134th Street and Southeast 149th Street, south and west of Lake Stanley Draper.
Hello. My name is Dakota Desai, 100 Northeast 5th Street. I'm here on behalf of the Trust. The purpose of this application is to close South Douglas Boulevard to pedestrian and vehicular access in order to secure a public water supply. This road directly accesses the Draper Water Treatment Plant and Reservoir. The site is considered a critical asset that is required to be protected under federal law. And the Oklahoma City Municipal Code allows for closure of public roads and section line roads that lead into or through reservoir sites for use of public water supply. There are no TEs and no written public protests, and staff has recommended approval. I can answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Privet, this is again Ward four, and I do have one person signed up to speak.
Yes, it is. Let's hear from him.
All right. Good afternoon.
Randall Ward, 12624 Steve Drive. I'll be quick because I'm supposed to be somewhere else. Yeah, allows is the key word there, not mandatory. This closure will affect 25 square miles of this city. Everything from Sooner to Westminster will be cut off. You can't go north between the, sorry, between those two streets. This is the only northbound road to the west side of the lake. There are no east and west. If you look at the map, you can't see all the street closures. Excuse me. From Water Plant Road on up, that's closed already. It's been closed for years. If I had more time, I could tell you about councilperson Nice getting lost in there because Google Maps shows it as a street. It hasn't been a street in many years. But anyway, if you look also, we don't have roads like, there's no grid system. If you go up to Westminster, which is listed as an alternative route north, that takes you to the Lake Road. That Lake Road winds around, so you're talking about a detour. Say you wanted to go to the Water Plant, and you get to 49th and Douglas, and you see the street's closed. You can go two miles east, go up to the Lake Road, which loops around on top of the dam. None of those roads are particularly wide. 149th is only two lanes wide. We have seen, in the 40-something years I've lived there, we have lost streets repeatedly. I used to be able to like meander through, what's, what do they call it, the Lake Draper Reservation on the west side. That's all closed off. All those streets are gone. The only east-west street from the west, from the lake is 104th. The east side, you can get around, but you're constantly blocked by the fact that the streets are all dead-ended somewhere. So, I just don't see we need to lose another street. I know security, I can't argue security, it's one of those words that's like God said it. I mean, what am I going to say? No, I mean, security, I can't argue that. I have no reason why they think they need to close off a road that's been there since I was in high school and used to evade the highway patrolman by coming down from Edmund, looping around to get to Thunderbird because our trailer was a little bit illegal. But it's, it's just one of those things. I wish we could stop closing. We've already lost all of Douglas now. It's going to be closed up there. And every time y'all, because this is, I was reminded by a staffer that this is the city of Oklahoma City. So, that's all of you and all of them and 700 and some thousand other people against me. But we've lost so many streets. Our streets aren't through streets. Nothing goes through. Everything has a closure on it. So, anyway, I'm sure, there's got to be some way to leave that open as an alternative route. It's not heavily traveled. It's not like, you know, it's gravel, poor gravel sometimes. Right now, it's great gravel, but most of the year, it's pretty well-washed out. So, anyway, that's me. I know, losing battle, don't care. I just wish you'd do something that, you know, like last spring, for example, I could not go north from Hiwasi. Hiwasi was flooded. Anderson was closed. 89th West was closed. My only alternative was to get over on the Lake Road, loop all around, and finally find my way back around to get to Moore. So, anyway, it's a different animal out there. So, you could defer this for a couple of weeks. I recommend a month, and then all of you go out there and drive around, see what I'm talking about, and enjoy the beautiful foliage, so. And also, just finally, the mayor says this is like an undiscovered state park. Not sure that's exactly a compliment, but that's also the only access to a lake, our lake. There's, you, you would have to go out of your way to get to the lake. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
No.
I mean, this, this is definitely kind of an odd area out there because of the lake. I mean, you can see that, I mean, just immediately, two miles to the north, I mean, it dead-ends anyway. It's not connected to, you know, further north because of the lake. And, you know, to the west, there's, there's not through streets on the west. So, I mean, I under, there's definitely a lack of connectivity out there, but I think that comes with the nature of, you know, having one of our most significant water supply and recreation areas, you know, in the area, so.
Yeah. I'm surprised it's been open this long, honestly. But, you know, I don't, I don't know of any alternative.
Yeah, and I mean, the other, the other part of this is, I mean, this, this right-of-way runs through water plant facility structures. It's not like the treatment facility is set off to the side and they could gate, you know, their own drive entrance. This portion of Douglas is their drive access, so.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. I think we're ready for our motion.
All right. I will make a motion to approve CE 1152, or recommend approval to city council.
Yeah. Commissioner Privet recommends item to city council. It's seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended to city council. Item six.
This is case PC 10988, application to rezone 1100 East Reno Avenue from I-3 to I-1.
Good afternoon. John Doyle, Cedar Creek Engineering, 11912 North Penn in Oklahoma City. This is a rezoning application for the property listed. It's currently I-3. The applicant wants to change it to I-1 for the purpose of building hotels, which I-3 doesn't allow that, but I-1 does. I've looked over the staff report. There are no TEs, but they do recommend application, recommend approval for the application. Be happy to answer any questions if you all have any.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Harrison, this is Ward seven. I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Any comments on Commissioner?
I'll just say, you know, you've got, you got new hotels immediately across the street. This is going to be within walking distance of our amazing Olympic, Olympic venues in 28. I really do see Reno developing eastward as more of a tourism destination, so I think this is just one of the first of many that we'll see.
Good. It was appropriate on Reno. The horizon.
I recommend, recommend approval to city council.
All right. We have a motion to recommend the item to city council from Commissioner Harrison. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And that item's recommended for approval. Item seven.
Item seven is case SPOD 1779, application to rezone 8728 North Chertel Avenue from R-1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. This is an application that would allow a duplex development. It's very similar to what you see on the map as spud 1693 and spud 1692. There are no TEs. Happy to answer any questions.
This is Commissioner Powers' Ward. So, she is not here to lead our discussion. I do have one person signed up. We ready to hear from them?
Let's hear from them.
Okay. Is it Rahi Oldham?
Yes, Ray.
Ray.
Yes, I live at, my name is Ray Oldham. My, my property is at 8700 North Chertel, which is immediately south of this property. And my concern is drainage. Currently, the water runs to the north. There's a shallow depression running on the east side of Chertel that goes north, and if this is developed, will that back up water onto my property? My property is undeveloped, and I would like to develop it at some point. Right now, it's staying dry under all rain conditions, but I'm concerned that if this area is developed, that it will force the water back onto my property to the south. We are separated. There's, it's platted as a 20-foot alley that runs east and west that's on the south property line. The other question I had was, it shows that the building is going to be, looks like there's a five-foot setback to the alley. Be on the right side of this picture. Is that, yes. So, the alley is right there. Is that correct, that there's a five-foot setback for any building, or should it be for a garage only?
That would be any, any structure. You would not be able to allow to build. Surface pavement, they've got a small patio showing. That's just surface paving. No, no vertical structure would be allowed in that five-foot zone.
Yes, but that, yes, but that pertains to a dwelling as well as a garage, any building. Okay. I guess my main concern is just drainage at this point. Right now, the water is flowing on the bottom of that picture from right to left.
So, I'll just mention on that, so Oklahoma City has a new drainage ordinance, so any development plans, when they get to that point, will be submitted and reviewed and must be approved by city staff, engineers, and review all the drainage calculations. And, you know, essentially, no additional water from this property would be allowed to flow onto your property greater than what is already doing so now.
Okay. This property slopes pretty dramatically to the, to the east and to the south, and I understand about bringing in soil to make a level spot, but is there any maximum? Can you build it up two feet, five feet, eight feet, 10 feet? Is there, or is that just all dependent upon how it changes the drainage?
Well, they will, they will prepare their plans, you know, to, you know, how to best handle the drainage. Obviously, you don't want to elevate the site too much because then you've got slope, steep slope driveways, so I imagine, you know, they would want to keep fill to a minimum, but I don't know. Unless the applicant has anything else to add? Okay.
Nope.
Okay. All right. We appreciate your time. All right. Any other comments, questions from commissioners?
No. With that, I would recommend approval of SPOD 1779, and there are no TEs.
We have a motion to recommend the item to city council from Commissioner Noble. It's been seconded by Mr. Harrison. Please cast your votes. And that item's recommended for approval. Item eight.
This is SPOD 1777, application to rezone 2200 Northwest 33rd Street from R-1.
Good afternoon. My name's Joseph Miller. My wife Hadley and I, we own the property at 2200 Northwest 33rd Street. This is a corner lot, 7,000 square feet, 50 by 140, and we're requesting to rezone this to allow development of a duplex property on the south side of the, of the lot. The duplex would be a two-story, each, for each, each side, including a single car garage as well as driveway parking. The existing house on the lot will remain as-is, as well as the attached garage and the driveway on the property, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is also Commissioner Powers' Ward. So, Commissioner Noble, would you like to lead our discussion?
I will. Is anyone signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
We discussed this in the, in the pre-meeting, and the one thing that came up is the maximum height in the, in the application was 35 feet, but the building height itself is only 30. I was wondering if you would be willing to just put maximum height at 30 feet?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
And you're good with the one TE that's written? We need to read that out.
With the sidewalks?
Yes, we're, we're good with the TEs.
Okay. And that is that, that road is not curbed and guttered and...
Yeah, there's no existing curbs.
Yeah. Sidewalks would be pretty difficult through there. Anything else? With that, I will make a motion to recommend approval to city council, SPOD 1777, with TE number one.
And?
And the change to a maximum building height of 30 feet.
Which would be TE two.
TE two.
Okay. We have a motion to recommend the item to city council, subject to, its technical evaluations as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And that item's recommended for approval. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item nine.
Item nine is SPOD 1765, application to rezone 1422 Northwest 17th Street from R-1 and Gatewood UC to SPOD 1765 in Gatewood UC.
Hi, Aiden Struble, 1422 Northwest 17th. So, basically, this spud is going to allow us to develop the south side of the property to put a two-unit garage apartment. Now, the two-unit garage apartment will have two parking spaces per unit. Yeah, it's getting pulled up right here. And then we've been meticulous to have the staircases be on the back of the property to allow for privacy for all the residents on the side of the street. And then we have met on two occasions with neighbors on concessions with the actual development. So, we're going to not build the garage on the south side for the front, for the front house to be able to keep two mature trees there. And then also, we are going to keep the historic home up front, unlike many developments around this area. We're going to keep that, and then we are going to improve the exterior of it. And then also, we have agreed to 17 of the 18 TEs. The only TE that we are not agreeing to is to improve the alleyway to city standards.
Okay. Commissioner Goveen, this is your ward. I have four signed up to speak.
Okay. Well, I think we can hear from those that are signed up to speak, and then we can come back to the applicant and discuss questions. I have my mic turned on here, but it's...
Is it on?
Oh. It's, sorry.
All right.
Let's hear from the, the people signed up to speak.
Very good. We'll begin with Candace Drum.
I am Candace Drum, and I've been a resident of Gatewood for 35 years, and...
Could I just have your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. It's Candace, C-A-N-D-I-C-E, and then Drum with two Ms., D-R-U-M-M. And it's 1920 North Indiana Avenue.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, first of all, I think that... Well, first of all, I think that we would like the alleyway to be paved and redone for access. It just doesn't seem like there's very good access to the property through the alleyway. And second of all, I don't believe that this is in compliance with UCD rules. I think that, I do not believe that it's harmonious to the neighborhood. I believe that it, it quite distracts from, I believe you will be able to see it from above the roof line, and that I believe that that, you know, is not harmonious to the architecture that surrounds it. Other than those two points, I really have nothing else to say. But those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Sandra Casimis?
Good day. I'm Sandra Casimis. I live at 1901 Northwest 17th with my husband Randy. I noticed that my email comments regarding the spud didn't, were not delivered to your server, had deleted them, or not, not accepted my comments. So if you will permit me, I would like to read my comments into the record.
Sure.
Okay. Randy and I are submitting our input regarding spud 1765, the request by Struble Properties LLC to rezone the residence located at 1422 Northwest 17th Street, which is within the Gatewood Historical Conservation Neighborhood and Ward 6, from an R1, single-family residential to a simplified planned unit development. The property in question is an 1,161 square feet, one-story ranch frame, single-frame residence, originally constructed in 1916, soon to be 110 years old. It is currently onsite, it currently has onsite a matching frame detached garage, which is only accessible from 17th Street. The property backs up to a single-lane unpaved alley that is accessible from both Douglas and McKinley Streets. There's a city traffic sign just outside the Douglas Street Alley entrance advising that deaf children may be playing in the vicinity of the alley. The alley allows residential property owners to access garages located at the rears of their property. I did a drive-by on September 5th, and it appears that all the properties having access to the alley are currently single-family residences. The residences on this block facing 17th Street that is bordered by Douglas and McKinley Streets are generally in declining condition. The exception to this description is loaded, located at 1424 Northwest 17th. This home is a fine example of how all of these homes would look if they were renovated. Christina purchased her renovated home at top dollar on May 6, 2024, for $595,000. A quick peek at the assessor's website shows that this is easily the highest property value on the street. Her detached garage is only accessible by way of the alley. Her home at 1424 Northwest 17th Street is adjacent to the house at issue, 1422 Northwest 17th. They are very close together and, and share mature trees that share both sides of the property. I understand that the mature trees of 1422 Northwest 17th will sadly be cut down in order to build the proposed two-story apartment building. Instead of the shade of the trees, Ms. Griffith would be subjected to construction noise that will be, will result in apartment balconies and second-story windows looking down on her previously private backyard. I also understand that the apartment dwellers will somehow have some sort of parking that will be accessible from the alley. Gatewood residents enjoy our longtime official designation as the Historical Conservation District. As historical conservation, conservationists ourselves, this is exactly what drew Randy and me to purchase our home in Gatewood 21 years ago this month. We have opened our home on Gatewood's annual house tour, which allows people to see how beautiful our homes are and how livable the neighborhood is. We've served on the boards of the, of the Plaza District Association, and we're also really longtime acquaintances as a result of our neighborhood involvement with the Strubles. And they're, they're great friends. They believed in our neighborhood really before anybody else did. And I've seen examples, in fact, a house down the street from us is a really fine example of a house that can be redone, that they, they did it several years ago, our neighbors. Unfortunately, maybe purely for financial reasons, the Strubles have decided to go in a completely different direction with this modification. The footprint of this property is very compact, as you may see from the pictures, and I don't believe there's, just simply, there's no room to comfortably accommodate a multifamily apartment building and parking that will be squeezed into the backyard of this historical home. Property owners, especially Ms. Griffith, do not deserve having to put up with this unexpected change of usage that is not in keeping with our historical neighborhood. She brought her home in good faith that the existing zoning would protect her $594,000 investment from being encroached by apartment dwellers, and that the shared, single-lane unpaved alleyway would not be blocked by the apartment dwellers' cars. She never expected that her significant investment in our neighborhood might lose considerable value simply due to rezoning that will allow the encroachment of an unsuitable apartment building that will literally be almost in her own backyard. Our other concern is that, if granted, this rezoning will establish a precedent for this switch-in usage throughout the Gatewood Historical Conservation Neighborhood. These neighborhoods are treasures. Once they're gone, they're gone. And now that the downtown Oklahoma City is thriving again, these once-overlooked original homesteads of this city are being scooped up one by one by developers. The planning commission, the planning commission is the only thing standing in the way of widespread loss of these homesteads. We implore you to do your own drive-bys, stand strong to support the hundreds of compliant homeowners in our historical neighborhoods as we try en masse in our generations to preserve these homes for those in future generations. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Casimis? All right. Thank you. Thomas Lovett?
Hi, Thomas Lovett, 1325 Northwest 20th Street. I'm here to speak in opposition of the proposed rezoning of the property of 1422. While I respect the property owner's desire to develop their land, this is not about a single property, it's about the very fabric of our community. I'd like to begin by commending this council on its forward-thinking decision in May 2025 to pass the new ADU ordinance. The legislation was a significant step forward in, for Oklahoma City. It was a clear and well-considered response to our city's housing needs, allowing homeowners to add a single, modest dwelling on the property by right without the need for a convoluted and disruptive rezoning process. The new ordinance was meant to be a solution. It was designed to add density and housing options while preserving the character of our single-family neighborhoods. It recognized that a garage apartment or backyard cottage can fit within the existing community without causing major disruptions. Now we have a request before you, that in essence is an, an attempt to circumvent the very legislation. The proposed luxury duplex is the exact kind of backyard dwelling the new ADU ordinance was designed to regulate. But instead of following the new appropriate process, the owner seeking a full rezoning to create a multiple-building lot, this is a significant distinction and a dangerous one. There's a body of research that indicates these types of rezonings can negatively impact the property values of surrounding homes. While a single ADU can be seamlessly integrated, a full-scale rezoning and the creation of multi-building lots can alter the very character and aesthetic that make our neighborhood a desirable place to live. It changes the nature of our community from one of single-family homes to something else entirely, without any of the input from the people who live there. But perhaps the most important issue is not about property values, it's about the community and the precedent this decision would set. When we as a community come together to oppose a rezoning, we do so not out of a "not in my backyard" mentality, but out of a genuine concern for our shared space. This may not be my property, but we can all agree that what one neighbor does to their property can have a lasting negative effect for surrounding properties. We believe in the vision of our neighborhood as a place for families and residents who value single-family living. We trust that our government and specifically this council will listen to our concerns and will act in the best interest of the community as a whole. To approve a rezoning request like this, especially when a new ordinance already provides a clear and appropriate pathway for a single ADU, would send a troubling message. It would tell every neighborhood in Oklahoma City that laws are, that laws passed by this council can be bypassed by individual requests. It would erode the public confidence in the planning process and in our government. If a well-reasoned, community-backed ordinance can be so easily ignored, why should we continue to engage in this process? This plan calls for two new apartments that would rely on our shared alley for all residential traffic, a poorly maintained alley that is already a source of frustration for our neighbors. Our infrastructure is strained. Adding four to eight months of construction vehicles, four more cars, and additional wear and tear they bring would make a bad situation even worse. It would comprise the safety and quality of life for everyone who lives on the block. Finally, I have read both the staff report dated for 25 September and met with the developer, and there are still significant concerns regarding the proposed development plan. The existing spud still includes a third garage for primary residents, a detail that warrants review. Furthermore, the report fails to specify a frosted window overlooking the residences to the east and west, which is critical for ensuring privacy. Although the plans state that the mature trees along the fence, along the fence line of 1422 and 1424 will be preserved, the proposed foundation for the property raises doubts about the feasibility of this commitment. The document also vaguely states that the new property will adhere to the neighborhood's architectural style if possible, a qualification that lacks clear explanation. These ambiguities lack to, lead to a lack of confidence that the final project will match the current plan. There's legitimate fear that the approved development would eventually become a large, low-cost duplex with windows that compromise neighbors' privacy and is only accessible by a poorly maintained road, which would be an unacceptable outcome for our community. I urge you to consent, consider the intent and spirit of your own ordinance, which is the right tool for this job. It allows housing flexibility while protecting the integrity of our neighborhoods. I respectfully ask you to deny this rezoning request. Let's stand by the careful, deliberate work that has already been done. Let's protect the character of our community and uphold, uphold the confidence that our citizens have in their government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. And then lastly, I have Christians Griffith?
Christina.
Kristen, okay.
You wrote my name wrong? Thank you. My fiance wrote my name wrong.
You better, you better learn to get that right.
All right, third time's a charm. You think this would get easier, but it doesn't. My name is Christina Griffith. I reside at 1424 Northwest 17th, directly next door to the property in question. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning for the property owner to build multiple two-story apartments, effectively creating a lot with three rental properties packed in on a block of single-family homes. While I respect property owners' rights, I'm, and I'm in support of actions to build and expand to address Oklahoma City's housing needs, I believe it needs to be done in a way that respects current infrastructure and residents. This rezoning request has not accomplished this, and I've just outlined a few points why. Preservation of historic character. Gatewood is designated an urban conservation district, keyword being conservation. Though these districts allow for more flexibility than historic preservation districts, the guidelines are still designed to preserve and enhance the character of the historic and unique neighborhoods. Looking at the staff report, it states that the priorities for UM areas, and they are to infill vacant lots, rehabilitate underutilized property, and support developments that revitalize distressed neighborhoods. This falls in none of those categories. This is a small, single-family lot. It is not underutilized, as these apartments will barely fit in the space, leaving very little green space left. The introduction of high-density rental units in a medium-density area, especially a multi-story structure and backyards of single-story homes on lots zoned for single-family use threatens the aesthetic and architectural cohesion of our neighborhood. There are also impacts to homeowners and property values. The only way to fit these apartments in on the lot is to have zero feet of clearance in the rear, which I don't believe is to code. I may be wrong, this is not my job, but I don't believe that's to code. And five feet of clearance from my fence, two feet at the widest point because there are overhangs. This may be in code, but two feet for a 35-foot-tall building will make it feel like it's in my yard. Again, as a single mother with no safety net, to just get up and move, I invested .6 million dollars into my home because of current zoning, because I, I saw that it was surrounded by single-family homes. And because I didn't want to live right next to an apartment complex, next to a lot with three rental properties squeezed in. If I did, again, I guarantee you I would have paid less than I did. And that's exactly what's going to happen when the time comes for me to sell my home. The tricky part of projects like this is while rezoning is often touted as a tool to increase affordability, in practice, it often contributes to gentrification and displacements. Packing in luxury rental units, which was what we were told these would be, can artificially inflate surrounding property values and taxes, potentially pushing out long-term, lower-income residents while at the same time driving down our property desirability and sellability due to the monstrosities like this overlooking our yards. This defeats the stated goal of inclusive urban housing solutions. There are also impacts to infrastructure. The staff report states that our local aqua floor is highly vulnerable to depletion, and the recommendation is to preserve natural, open areas. I don't see how building apartments that will take up a majority of the lot is following this recommendation. Additionally, the main point of entry and exit will be via two, two-car garages from the alleyway. To do this, three healthy, mature trees will need to be unnecessarily cut down. Furthermore, the alleyway is an entire issue on its own. Only half of the alley is currently paved. It's full of potholes and is already congested with traffic and is a safety concern. With additional traffic, this is going to quickly and significantly deteriorate the state of the already damaged alley, making it unusable. The developer is going to add space for additional vehicles. They also need to ensure that the alley can sustain that by paving it to public works standards. I think it's especially important that it's done to these standards because with the alley being the only point of entry and exit, it is imperative that it's done correctly to ensure it will last. I understand it's expensive, but if the developer does this cheaply, it's going to result in cheap quality and the road is not going to last, and then who's going to repair it?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Keep in mind, this is the only point of entry and access for the residents. Erosion of public trust. Gatewood residents have spent decades maintaining the standards that earned our design as a UCD. Rezoning the single parcel without enough community input in regards for what the community wants sends a message that these efforts and the regulatory protections meant to support them can be disregarded. We have come together to fight this. If this isn't enough for you to turn this down, what is? If these valid collective concerns are not enough to vote this down, why even send out these letters? Why even hear what we have to say if our vote doesn't count? I respectfully implore you to deny this request. I ask that you uphold city legislature on ADUs to help further, not further deteriorate our community because once it's gone, it's gone. Once these one-bedroom apartments are built, they will forever be there. There will be no other use for them other than housing a constant rotation of people who are here for a good time, not a long time, and that some of our voices should matter more than the profits of a single developer.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. All right, that's everyone I have signed up to speak. So we'll start with comments, questions from commissioners.
Well, I guess I'll kick it off. And just to preface this, I think I'll share some thoughts. I know there's other thoughts on, on the commission here, and this is by no means an easy case or any kind of shoe-in, so I have no idea what's going to happen today. But I'll voice my thoughts and, and welcome everyone's other, alternative thoughts and opinions with respect. Sorry, this is a little bit loud. And for the, the individuals that spoke up today, I appreciate all of your comments as well. We've, we've, we've all spoken, we've read what's been sent through. I'm familiar with the area. I have spent quite a bit of time, both on the street and the alley and surrounding blocks and in the neighborhood in general. I think we're going to need to hear from the applicant again because I have some, if I was to even consider making a motion to approve this, I have some adjustments that need to be discussed and agreed to. And so, let me, let me get the easy ones out of the way. The frosted window to the east with, which is translucent glass, so visually obscured but still would allow light and safety for escapes in a bedroom, we, we would need to add a TE for that, for sure. I presume- I presume there won't be any concern over that by the applicant. The consideration about height and bulk thoughts there, I mean, they are meeting the base zoning, side yard setbacks. I did want to discuss a height consideration of 30 feet instead of 35, and we can come back and, and discuss these. Frankly, I, I am of the opinion as well that I think an ADU as of the 80, recently passed ADU code would be appropriate here, mainly because of the mid-block location. That said, that's not the application we're here to review today. So we can't force someone to do something that they're not willing to do, and everyone has a right to, to put in a, a spud application for development. So we're going to discuss this particular application today, but with the, with the knowledge that they could always go back and do an ADU if this was not successful. When it comes to, so, so just to elaborate on that, one unit can be built here as of right today, just like any of these large, single-family homes on 17th Street could have multiple tenants living in them and be rented to three, four, however many people want to share a house. There's nothing preventing anyone from doing that. This is a dense part of Oklahoma City. It's a growing part of Oklahoma City. I'm not looking at just one law and its relationship to one neighbor. I'm looking at the law in relation to the block, the other side of the alley, surrounding blocks as well. And there is a, a, a strong precedent for increased density in this part of the city. That's my opinion. I believe that density is right in the core, and I don't, and, and so I'm not hung up on the two-unit issue as far as the density. There is a, a high level of usage of this alley as it stands. Multiple residents on the street take access from that alley on, both on 16th and 17th. And the condition of that alley is a, a major issue, and it's been noted by multiple people that spoke today. So I think we have to have a conversation about alley improvements, which I know we have discussed before prior to this meeting. Historic character I want to address by proposing to remove the words "will attempt where possible to" from the architectural section of the MDS. I just wanted to read, just simply, it will comply with the Craftsman, the architecture will complement the existing Craftsman-style home on the property. I don't think you'd have too much objection to that, but I'll let you, you answer that one as well. Okay, so we've addressed character. My thoughts on density, which I'll open to others. They've noted they will be renovating the house, so there will be added value to the property as a whole if this development were to proceed. And again, there was a lot of work done in advance with, you know, 17 or 18 potential TEs that, that they did make accommodations for. And again, the garage removal is a, another TE that that site plan would need to be resubmitted before city council without that shown, as well as identification of the, the trees that would be preserved, which will additionally help block views from properties on 17th looking back towards the backyard. So I'll pause there, I guess, and ask the applicant, Mr. Struble, are you okay with the Craftsman-style wording?
Oh, yeah. First, I'm Jeff Struble, living in 11 Northwest 15th. I'm a resident of the neighborhood also. And yeah, I'm on board with what you, yeah, with it.
You're good with the frosted window TE?
Pardon me?
You're, you're good with adding a TE that requires frosted windows to the east?
Yes, yeah, on the, on the two-bedroom windows, yes, on the sides, correct.
And the height reduction TE to 30 feet?
To 30, we can live with 30 feet, yes.
You could live with that, okay. That brings us to the alley improvements.
Right.
Do you want to tell us your, your findings there?
You know, that is a, I think something that the city really needs to be looking at. These alleys are gems to these neighborhoods. If you look the alley, the block to the east, we, I had that re, the city repaved that alley probably 16, 17 years ago. And if you look at the amount of improvements that have happened along that alley, I mean, I think it well paid for that city work to be done. And I think the city needs to take a hard look at all of these alleys because, I know that's another conversation, but I think that's something that is, is a little gem in these inner-city neighborhoods that the city has neglected and has not addressed. I think if this project was one or two houses in, you know, that's a different conversation to re-improve the alley, but I think with stuff in the middle of the alley, I know with, that's a lot to ask for a developer, but to fill the potholes and, and to bring some material in to kind of smooth the alley out, I mean, that's something that we are definitely planning on doing. But to repave the alley up to city standards, we're getting into, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that just kind of would ruin anybody's, you know, opportunity to do any development on these blocks. But like I said, we are willing to, and we are planning on filling the potholes on the whole alley and, and, you know, helping make that more drivable, definitely.
That's a, that's a, that's a tough one. And, you know, it's, it's, you have a mid-block lot.
Right.
You know, if, if the last, the last application we reviewed is, was a corner lot. We approved a duplex added to an existing, single-family home on a corner, and that would be much more straightforward if this case were the same.
Yeah.
It would also be much more straightforward if you were to put an ADU per the, per the zoning regs that are in place now. So on one hand, there's an ask to do more, but there's, you know, we can't control where your lot is on, on the alley.
Right.
And I'm going to have trouble moving approval of this without a more concrete agreement of something to alleviate the pressure on that, on the increased traffic in the alley. And I know you're not the only one using it.
Right.
So, and I, I don't want to create an unfair burden, but that's kind of the crux. You know, I, I don't know what these things cost, to be honest. You know, I, I'm not the expert on, on paving, you know, but maybe we should hear from some other commissioners because that might factor into discussion.
If you don't mind, thanks. I'll go next and I'll take it and run with that. Even if you were willing to improve the alleyway, still, to me, clearly not appropriate. We've allowed ADUs. We allow one building. If it was something special, then maybe we'll look at special exceptions. If it was a corner lot, maybe. If it was a particularly large lot, if it was surrounded by apartments. Rather than repeating all the other protesters' comments, I agree with all those, but the simple to me is two buildings on this lot is not appropriate. We've, we've agreed to the ADU ordinance. There's the phrase, you know, give an inch, take a mile. That is clearly what you're doing here. There's, there's no special reason to me, even if you agree for the alley. Frosted windows, I don't think anybody says that resolves it for them. So to me, this is not a difficult case. The financial argument of making it difficult to develop here, don't think any of the rest of the neighbors are concerned with that either, so, and I'm not. So, sorry, this is just not the right spot for this, to me.
Well, also to, to comment on that, there, there was a slide that showed the zoning in, on the block, and I asked that to be submitted because on this block, there are 11 fourplexes. There's 12 single-family houses. If this was, I don't know, and that was supposed to have that part of the packet. But, I mean, if it was all single-family houses, that, to me, looks a little bit different. If we didn't have the alley, you know, that makes it a little bit different also, but...
So if I were to do math, I think behind you and next to you is how many, like?
Seven different people around you adjacent that you'd be towering over their backyards, always a concern for me. If you're talking about across the street, if you're talking about wherever you, these neighbors, they're immediately adjacent or catty-corner to your backyard. With these tall structures, that is the problem.
So behind our structure, there's a duplex in the alley behind on 16th, and then two doors down, there's a fourplex. I mean, so they did, it's not unusual for the area to, but just...
Do any of them have three buildings on one lot?
Would have two buildings on one lot, but no.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Not three? I do agree that, I mean, the facts do show that there's numerous multifamily structures, you know?
Oh, here we go.
In this, on this block.
This seems like too much.
This seems really forced to me, and I agree with the height comments. It seems out of context to me, especially mid-block. If this was on street corner, on the end of the block, I'd be a lot more open to it, but I'm having a hard time supporting this.
Well, and if you look at just this map that we have, the next block over, there's fourplexes right on the alley that are using the alley. I mean, so like I said, the density is here with the urban, you know, with the Plaza District, two blocks down, there are, you know, people want to live in this area, and there needs to be more housing options, and that's what, that's what we're looking at to try to, and also we're over-parking the site. We have two parking spots per unit, two, per bedroom, which nobody is, you know, and it's covered parking, you know, in a garage. So we're, you know, trying to really do our due diligence and, you know, to bring this, with the alley situation, to redo the alley not to city standards, but to, you know, bring the alley up, that'd be something we would consider to, because we definitely want that to be drivable and easy to get to on the back.
What would that look like? I mean, it would, we would need to, you know, if, I don't know the difference between public works standards and, and improved with, you know, asphalt overlay or, I, I've been told by some people that asphalt overlay in that scenario would actually be more expensive than concrete, but I don't know, I don't, I'm not an expert on these things, so I can't speak to it, but I just know that based on all the feedback I've had and all the calls I've had, aside from even other people not, that did not speak today, that's a major concern. So that, that's really, we got to get something in here on that if, if I was even to make a motion, and that motion might still not, not be approved today, so.
Do you, do you want to ask for clarification on public works standard?
Yes. Would that be okay?
Yeah, public works? Can you tell us what the, what the standard for alley paving is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Under our public works, it has to be public works standard and asphalt.
So the standard is asphalt?
Or concrete.
Or concrete.
But it has to meet public work paving standards.
Which they, which they have a section detail?
Right.
In the standards.
And has to be.
Certain, certain thickness.
City approved contractor.
Six inches thick, ADs upgrade. What would, what, is there a benefit to doing it? If, is there something less that we could agree that would still be a, a, a big improvement that the applicant could be agreeable to?
Typically, we don't approve it.
Not approved if it's not, if it doesn't meet the standard?
Yeah. Okay.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it has to meet city standards.
So then the city will take care of it after that?
No.
So what, what's the use of doing city standards if the city's not going to take something over?
As per regulation. I agree, it's a, it's a...
That's kind of where I was is when I, when I thought around in the circle on this. It's, well, anything's better than a dirt gravel path, but it's not also not a benefit to, if it's just going to get torn up again and, and not, not last. So that, that's where I'm, I'm, I'm struggling on this one, so. If we can't, if we can't agree public works standards, then I, I think, I mean, I, I can't make a motion here.
Right. Well, I, I'm fine continuing this so we can get some definition on that and get some pricing on the alley if that's the, the, the big holdup. But if, if the council's not in favor of it at all, then I don't want to waste everybody's time, but, you know, that's something we, I definitely don't mind continuing it to figure out, get some more information on the alley to see what, you know, what would be the easiest path or the best way to go about that.
Well, and I appreciate that willingness to look at that. We did discuss that. We also have concern from the, the public about repeated continuances, and we have heard this already two, on two other planning commission days where people have shown up to speak on this, this case, so.
And it's been a TE for the whole time.
Yeah, and, and the TE's been there, so I think, is that something, if, if we were to, if, look, if I was to make a motion to approve this with the three TEs as written, and that includes the public, approving the alley to public works standards, is that something you would agree to and then decide what to do between now and council? Which you could always pull the case, and if it determines that it's just not, not feasible, then, you know, you, you got to do one unit.
God, I hate to agree that one. I don't have the figures on what that's going to be and what that, you know, that, that's a big ask, but...
It was already mentioned. You've had a lot of time. You're a developer.
Right.
You're the professional. If you don't yet know how much it costs to comply with a TE, we're not, I'm not going to be in favor of continuing it because you haven't figured that out yet.
To Commissioner Goveen's point, it's a recommendation to city council, which you're going to have six to eight weeks to investigate it further, and if you decide that it's not in your best interest to do that, then, then it gets pulled.
So we'll have three TEs. Go, let's go over this again, what you're at.
Okay. And again, this is, this is just me making a motion so far.
Right, no, I understand.
So we have three TEs existing, which is access shall be printed from 17th via maximum 16-foot-wide driveway and rear alley. Should the alley be used for access, it shall be improved to public works standards. Number two, revise Exhibit B to remove the central garage prior to city council consideration and amend section landscaping to add two mature trees shall be preserved within the central area of this spud between the detached structures. I would then add a further TE number four to remove the words "will attempt where possible to" from Section 2, Number 1 of the MDS. I would add a TE five, the side windows shall be frosted, also could be described as translucent glass. And TE number six would be a height, maximum height shall be 30 feet.
So in that, we are, could we look at doing one, the alley, one of the, choose which side is the closest to the main street and do half of the alley? We don't have to bring the whole alley up to city standards? That really seems a lot. But if we could do one from one street, you know, that, that would be easier than the whole alley that we're just, what, what do you guys think about that? That makes a little more sense to me to say, hey, if we were on a corner lot, we'd have to just improve behind our lot. We wouldn't have to do the whole alley. Do half of the alley or to the back?
My personal thought on that is I would, I would consider that a reasonable compromise on the alley, and it would be the, it would be to the, to the east.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with looking at that just to the alley.
So the alley would be, would be improved for the width of the property and to the east over to Douglas.
And maybe also that time, if I can talk to some of the neighbors, and maybe they'd want to have some more alley done, and they could pitch in to, to have their...
That, that's certainly possible.
Is we want to be, yeah.
And again, this is a recommendation to council. It's not a final step.
Right, I understand.
And no one's forcing you to do anything that you don't want to do because you can always rethink the whole.
Right, I understand. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm going to move, okay, well, is there any other comments from other people, other commissioners before? Okay. I'm going to move approval of SPOUD 1765 with the three TEs as written and the additional TEs. Do I need to state them again, or have we got them for the record sufficiently?
I think you need to read them again.
Okay. With the additional TE number four of removing the words "will attempt where possible to" from Section 2, Number 1, the architecture regs of the MDS, add TE number five, frosted or translucent glass windows to the side, side yard. And height, and TE number six, the maximum height shall be 30 feet.
Sounds good.
Sorry, Sarah Welch, Planning Department, could you please maybe just clarify five a little bit? And then were you requesting to modify TE 1?
Yes. Sorry, yes, okay. On, on TE number five, I think what we're saying is, I, I mean, we talked about it in relation to the east because the person, one of the speakers lives to the east, but I think it's the same on both sides, so it's, it's frosted glass to the side.
So there'd be one, one window frosted glass and the egress window on the sides?
Yeah, on, on, on both sides.
On both sides, yeah.
So that we would put the same protection for the people that aren't, aren't here to speak for themselves. And then number one, apologies, we would need to clarify the, should the alley be used for access, it shall be improved to public works standards. Alley improvements shall include the full width of the property and the, the remainder of the alley to the east to Douglas. I think that's the motion.
All right. So we have a motion to recommend the item to city council for approval. Waiting for a second. If we don't get a second, the motion fails. Last call for a second. All right, the motion fails. All right, the motion fails.
Sorry.
All right.
So we need another motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the application. We'll remind, I think the other folks here heard, this would still go to the city council. Things can change a lot there. It's a different group of elected officials there versus our volunteer service here, so.
Yeah, it is a recommendation that'll go forward in six to eight weeks, so please reach out to your council person.
Could I, sorry, before, just one more statement. Will the TE's as we just discussed and established be in the city council? Would the motion that was denied be listed with those TE's to council, or?
Typically, what we will do is on the memo to council, we will say the planning commission recommended denial, and should the application be approved, staff recommended the following TE's. In this case, we could add, and the planning commission, I think.
Yes, I would request that.
Mr. Barker, I don't know if we would say.
If you did that, I think it should be clear that even with those technical evaluations, it failed for lack of a second. I don't want to mislead them to think that it was.
Correct.
Anything other than an idea.
And what I'm trying to establish is that, for everyone here, both for and against this, that there's another stage to this, and it goes to council, and.
That's fine.
And, so, don't forget. Yeah, and make sure everyone has all the same information, that's all.
Generally speaking, I think to council, the planning commission minutes will also be included, which that failed motion because of no second will be included in the planning commission.
The failed motion will be included in the minutes. What I'm, what I need to think through or direction on is, we had a recommendation with additional TE's that were not accepted, and that was the recommendation of denial, even with the TE's that are not currently captured on the record.
Right. So whatever you typically sent, you're saying the TE's that were included in staff's original report?
Those are always sent to the council, should they approve it.
I do think it makes sense to.
We would need to add this conversation.
Yes.
Per Mr. La Forge, he wants it on the record that there were other TE's recommended to be added that were, and the, and the motion still failed.
Right.
Correct, okay.
And certainly include what they were. It was thoughtful, and they, if they're gonna move the opposite direction, hopefully it would be with those.
And, and they, yeah, exactly, because.
All right, so we have a motion to deny the item by Commissioner La Forge. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. A vote yes is a vote to deny. All right, that item is being recommended, not being recommended to city council. All right.
Do what you can.
And has been continued, item 11.
Where's your cookie?
Item 11 is case PUD 2098, application to rezon 8901 North Coltrane Road from AA.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. So this is a 6.72 acre PUD located on the west side of Coltrane, just south of Britton, you can see there. The whole purpose of this PUD simply is just to allow for two residential lots. The base zoning in our PUD is RA2. If you were to look on the location map immediately to the east on the other side of Coltrane, you'll see a bunch of houses. That's a neighborhood that is currently zoned in a PUD that allows for RA zoning. Those are one acre lots that you're looking at. So certainly, we feel like that our application for RA2 is conforming and compatible with the neighbors, and I think there's two TE's that we're in agreement with and would have staff recommended approval, and we'd ask for your approval as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Harrison, this is Ward 7. I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Any questions or concerns from commissioners? Saying that, I recommend approval of PUD 2099.
Have a motion to recommend approval to city council, subject to the technical evaluations?
Yeah, PUD 2098, my correct. Let's try it again. There we go. Thank you.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvine. Please cast your votes. And that's unanimously recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12.
Item 12 is PUD 2099, application to rezon 13415 North Bryant Avenue from PUD 1533.
Hello, Dakota Desai with SRB 100 Northeast 5th Street, on behalf of the applicant. This PUD is located south of Memorial, west of Bryant. Currently, the current PUD zoning, base zoning is R2, R4, and C3. The new PUD contemplated changing that to C1 and R3M to allow for development of multifamily and commercial uses. The applicant did hold a community meeting. The concerns brought up during that time included the lighting, fencing, and drive-through call boxes. All of those were addressed in the PUD. There were three TE's that we agreed to, and I can answer any questions.
Again, Commissioner Harrison, this is your ward. I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Any comments from commissioners? If not, I recommend approval of PUD 2099.
A motion from Commissioner Harrison to recommend approval to city council of the item subject to the three TE's. It's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvine. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended unanimously. Item 13.
This is PUD 2094, application to rezon 13945 North Portland Avenue from R1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street. On behalf of the applicant, also with me is Mark Zitzel. This is a project that has had some publicity because of the anchor tenant that's coming. The anchor tenant is a sporting goods store. If anyone has kids like I do, perhaps you've stopped by the one in North Texas. It is perhaps the most unique sporting goods store I've ever walked into. So it's a very exciting opportunity that they've chosen Oklahoma City to locate. They've chosen where to locate along Lake Heffner Parkway on a tractal land that has been undeveloped and underdeveloped for quite some time. Knowing that we have that residential neighborhood to the west, great care was taken to make sure we developed this and got this site zoned in a manner that would be both appropriate for the major commercial development that could go here, but also the existing single-family residential neighborhood to the west. That's why what you see before you is a two-tracked PUD with tract two being a residential tract. We have put limitations in tract two to try to ease concerns. We did have a community meeting out at Francis Tuttle many weeks ago where it was fairly well-attended. We talked about what was proposed. Some changes came from that, but it is important to note that we do have a landscape buffer along that west, and as well, a requirement of an eight-foot cedar cap stain fence with brick columns, I believe it's every 25 feet. So we've tried to kind of scale down development as you go from the Heffner Parkway moving to the west. When you look to the TE's, we've handed out kind of our responses, because there were six of them. We thought it probably made sense to be able to hand those to you in writing. We've also emailed those to staff, and I believe you all received an email copy as well. Also worth noting, there is a significant amount of floodway and floodplain that goes through that. You can see that on the site plan here, all of which will be respected and set back from in a manner to be consistent with best practices and the new drainage ordinance. So perhaps we should move to the TE's. I think we agree in concept with most of them. However, we do want to modify. So with TE one, staff is asking about a 25-foot max height limit, so we agree to the TE with an amendment. We would ask that the maximum building height in tract one shall be 125 feet excluding architectural elements, and then we list those out. So some of these retailers have very unique architectural requirements in what they do with their developments, including the, the anchor tenant, of course, has the Ferris wheel that, that is a part of that, which is a neat concept. TE two, we would agree again with an amendment. So what we're simply trying to do here is delete the multifamily residential use unit, but allow multiple units on a single lot to be permitted. So what is proposed in that tract two is a townhome-style development. So what we propose is add language to tract two permitted uses, multiple units on a single lot shall be permitted. So again, we agree with that amendment. On TE three, we would ask to amend the TE to request either a specific plan or the preliminary plat be provided and subject to planning commission review of common area acreage and locations, lot coverage, garages, and driveways. Here, we have a pretty good idea how tract one is going to develop, when it's going to develop, based upon the anchor tenant. Tract two, we have kind of less certainty, so it's harder to commit to those things now. What we're willing to do is give you the discretion at either a plat stage or a specific plan stage on that to make those judgment calls at that time. On TE four, we agree to a minimum of two streets to connect to tract two. We do not agree to a maximum of two driveways from Portland. The access will be pursuant to the subdivision regulations. And we finally agree that vehicular and pedestrian connections between tracks will occur. TE five, we agree. And then TE six, we do not agree. What we would propose is to add language in Section 9.8 to say, private access drive shall be constructed in accordance with the City of Oklahoma City parking lot standards. So again, you have all that, that was a lot, we can kind of go through them again, but I think it's worth noting, you've got an area in northwest Oklahoma City that has been significantly underdeveloped, and this is an amazing opportunity to bring in a developer that has very long coattails. The developers and developments that flow from this, this anchor tenant are significant, they're impactful, both from community enjoyment, but also from a sales tax generation. And I also need to add a TE seven, add the participant recreation and entertainment outdoor use to tract one. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I've got Mr. Zitzel here with me as well, and we think it's a wonderful development for Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Commissioner Noble, this is your ward. I have several signed up to speak.
And before they speak, let's, let's just go over the TE's, just to make sure we clarify them all, or the ones that I needed clarification on, is the, number one, the entire tract is gonna be a maximum of 125 feet?
Yes, sir.
With the exclusion of the listed.
Yes.
Items, so they could be taller than 125 feet?
Yes. Building height, 125. The architectural elements could be in excess of 125 within tract one.
Is there a limit to that?
Do you know which building?
The atmosphere.
Yeah.
Sure, so the, Mark Zitzel, when he shared an avenue, the zoning code already has architectural height limitations, and so we're, we're referring to that. So it's an additional 15 feet in height, and that's how it is in the other commercial districts throughout the city.
And the 125-foot is not per base? It's higher than the base zoning, right?
Well, it depends on the track. So the commercial zoning stairs.
In the location, right.
So we're actually putting a height cap on the entire tract. When we get far enough away, there'd be no height limitation on the property.
Under C3.
It just seems if the buildings that are gonna be 120 high feet are all the way to the west side of the property, then it'd be maybe out of, taller than what maybe should be, is all.
I still think, so, we have a significant distance between kind of the west side of tract two until you get to the, the west side of tract one. So between that and the development that'll occur, and kind of landscaping and all the other things we require, we think it will be adequately screened.
And it'll go to a specific plan?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any problems with number two. Or three. And the, the driveways, the additional driveways, I think per code probably is 250 feet between them, between the two driveways, so there might be one more?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, our point is, whatever, whatever the, the rules allow us is, is what we want. We don't want an internal congestion. We want to be able to adequately access Portland Avenue at that point.
And which is a service road, two lanes in one direction.
Correct.
So. Okay, with that, I think.
TE seven, weren't we going to further restrict that to say no concerts, or?
We can agree to no outdoor concerts.
Okay, at least.
Yeah. I mean, I was.
We're fine with that.
Finding a concert can be a little bit.
Yeah, so for context there, and the planning director can speak to this, at the half and some of the other ones, what we've run into is these, these users like a chicken and pickle or one that has an outdoor mini golf, that's the use unit that has to fall in, and so we're fine restricting it. We just, we don't want to run into an issue, similar issues that we ran into other ones by not including it. So whatever restriction needs to be put in place, we're fine with that.
We're not looking to do outdoor concert venue, but.
Correct.
Those outdoor participant recreation use units.
But the use allows it, so, you know.
We can say no.
Right.
There's, there's an event space, and that's why I just didn't want to, so.
Inside event spaces, yeah, I'm fine with that.
There's an out, an outside, I mean, proposed, very small, but still, what would be considered a concert, what would not be, I mean, you know.
You could put a, a cap on.
Somebody's gonna do an outside wedding, and you're gonna.
That's not a concert, though, you know.
Well, I mean, they have constant, they have outdoor music, live music at the Oak, and I don't hear neighbors complaining that live a block or two away. Bad noise, but maybe I'm wrong, and I don't know, but, I mean, no, small.
I don't think that's the same. Like a zoo amphitheater type of situation.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm talking about, yeah.
And I do think that that, that falls more into the spectator sports, outdoor use, not so much the participant. There's a, there's a difference between you participating in the activity outside versus you spectating on it, and that's how the current zoning code is written, and there's nuance there, but we are fine if it's a headcount limitation that needs to be on there.
So participant would cover karaoke.
What's that?
Participant could be like karaoke.
Right. I, I don't participate particularly, but perhaps, but that would be indoor.
I would think a headcount would be best.
I would love to see that, yeah. David, karaoke. Okay, I just wanted to clear that.
All right, are we ready to hear from our folks signed up? All right, let's start with Oscar Majors.
My name's Oscar Majors. I live at 14921 Monticello Drive, which is an addition just north of this development here, and we boundary line along with Remington Edition. We've looked at the PUD, and we were given an opportunity by the developer to come to a meeting so that we could see and understand what he was planning to do here, and we got documents at that meeting. Well, we are not here to oppose the development of the piece of property that they're, they're working on, but we do have a problem with the way that they have shown the stormwater drainage off of the property and the development that they're doing. The bulk of the water exits the site from the south side and goes into a couple of detention ponds there, and the north portion of this development, the water runs to the north, but they haven't shown any structures that are gonna help handle that water. Now, there may be 30 or 40% of the site goes north, and it goes into two creeks that are running north and south, and cross 150th Street about a quarter mile east of 74 and the east boundary line there. Now.
So I'll tell you, I can tell you right now that per the Oklahoma City.
I'm sorry.
Per the Oklahoma City Drainage Ordinance, no additional water will leave this site than is leaving it right now.
I, I understand that, and all I'm asking for is some assurance that the engineering for the, and there's no engineering done, but the, the plan right now doesn't even address that there's an issue, but we believe there's a big issue.
And I did talk to the drainage engineer today, and they're very well aware of it, and will follow the ordinance.
Okay.
And it will have to go through all of City, Oklahoma City channels and be approved prior to any development.
Sometimes mistakes are made, and we just want to make sure that we have an assurance from the board that. from the board that we won't have any problems with our drainage system, because we drain into that creek system up there, and if it gets inundated, we have a huge problem at our place. Agreed?
Agreed, yes.
You'll take care of us?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Jack and Debbie Merlin? No comments, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Stephen Menzel. I live at 4213 Northwest 144th Street in Remington. I love development. I want to see development. I'll probably go to all these things. Question is, is it fit here? The current situation, Mr. Box said it's significantly underdeveloped. I agree. With that said, have you been to that intersection at 150th Northwest in Portland? Just today, there's a car crumpled under that bridge. They couldn't tow it away, it was in such a mess. Tons of accidents, bad intersection. 150th East and West is highly traveled, because a lot of people want to avoid Memorial. Galaria just put a new light in. Now people are even more upset with going down that road, because the light at Remington, where we live, I've only been there a year and a half, I've seen four accidents. Every day I see somebody running that light. It's bad, bad intersection. They're all going to the one intersection of Portland and 150th. Have you seen that on a Sunday, when Crossing Church lets out? It's underdeveloped, but it is a crazy, busy intersection. Now, you put a footprint with, I think it's 250 townhomes. I think it's a 600-unit apartment. All those businesses, all that traffic, has to go through one intersection. You could do all your studies on traffic. I'm going to tell you right now, what you're going to find is that's a massive overload of that intersection. Why? Because everybody who has to go there has to go through it, because it's a one-way entrance down that service road. It is not going to handle it. It's going to be a problem. If you approve it, watch. I mark my words. The last is the townhomes. First off, that distance of, I forget what the, I think it's section two, the one for the townhomes, how wide that is, 125 feet. You, Sir Rusty, I think it was, sir, you had said about that apartment towering over people's backyards. Oh my gosh. Towering over backyards from the commercial piece. The townhomes are supposed to be two stories and three stories. Two-story at 20 feet, I think 15 feet away from an eight-foot fence? Wow, that's, no, they're going to be looking in their yards. So sadly, I strongly ask to turn this down, find another piece of property that has, surround it by a property or land that gives it better access. Not there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Menzel.
Tim Munson, 4316 Northwest 143rd Street. I concur with all the comments that you've heard so far. I wrote a letter yesterday evening to Commissioner Noble. I included with that a small map. I don't know if it's pertinent to share that here, or can that be shown here? Okay, I'll do that in just a second, then. So the issue on this particular exhibit that you're looking at here, I don't know if you can see it very well, but this has topographic contours. And the gentleman that was talking about the potential, or the drainage issues that he's concerned with on the far northwest quarter of this track one and track two, drains to the north up towards 150th. So this tract, track one and two, has got a, basically an east-west separation. Most of the, probably two-thirds of the drainage is going to come down to the south. It's going to go into these two proposed retention ponds, and then it's ultimately going to go into this, you can see this meandering creek. Well, that meandering creek, downstream of that, goes up to the north and wraps around the southeast quarter of the Remington Edition. I live on the southeast quarter of Remington Edition. My backyard drops off about three and a half feet onto what is a 100 slash 500-year floodplain. So when it rains of any significance, water will stand in that, on that property behind my home for several days. So any additional water, or any additional issues having to do with stormwater runoff is going to potentially impact my home, and several other homes along the west side of Remington, which isn't even on this map. So the fact that, at the meeting, we did have a good meeting, and Counselor Box was there, and Tim Johnson's there, and they were very good about, you know, trying to answer questions. And then they did postpone their hearing a couple of weeks, and revised their PUD to take into account some of our concerns. But two concerns that were raised that were not addressed and have yet to be addressed are the stormwater survey. I think it would be prudent to have that done before you approve something like this. And then the second thing that we talked about, that was touched on just then, is the congestion issue from a traffic standpoint at Memorial and Portland, and then on the north end at 150th and Portland. The gentleman was right, there is a car that's crumpled under that overpass. I saw it this morning. I also saw two cars run through the stoplight in front of Remington before I could get out to go to work this morning, and that doesn't happen rarely. That happens all the time. There had been, there was a fatality accident just east of the 150th Portland intersection earlier this year. So I have this map, I assume this can, I don't know, can you show this on the screen?
We can't show it on the screen, but you can pass it around, and we can look at it.
Here, I've got a few of them, man. I was able to put this together with cooperation of Oklahoma City Police Department. And this is a map, and you can, there's a legend on the bottom that shows you what the icons are on the map. But basically, I asked for last 12 months, traffic and crime incidents, and the icons are illustrated on the bottom. So I looked for burglary of motor vehicle, trespassing, assault, burglary of residents, robbery of an individual, vandalism, motor vehicle theft, and traffic incident. And what I show on this exhibit is, this is the, this is the PUD that we're talking about. This is Remington. Right over here is Quail Springs Mall. You can see the significant amount of criminal activity and traffic incidents over here. And what you're, what the applicant is asking you to approve is for them to put that here right next to all of our homes. You don't have any, you don't have any R1 anywhere around over here. You've got a whole lot of R1 over here, and you want to put that right in our backyard. And you want to have a 12-story hotel looking down in the people's backyards all along Pony Road, which is on the west boundary of Remington. So that isn't conducive. That's not, that's not, that's not something that you should approve, and it should be dismissed out of hand. I know that everybody's excited to get a really fancy sporting goods store that's got a Ferris wheel and all that, and that's great. I'm not opposed to that. And I'm not opposed to developing this property, but this is not compatible with what's to the west of us, and it needs to be something more compatible. And I don't think that they've done enough to try to address that properly. And I'll leave that, let's see if I think I have one other thing. Oh, and on this particular slide here, you can't read it, but you see that, the blue text everywhere, you see a little parking lot in there? Well, that lists how many parking spots they're going to put in here. It's over 4,300 parking spots. So right now, that's raw land. When it rains, the rain absorbs in, there's a lot of trees, a lot of vegetation. This is going to be 4,300 parking spots. This is basically going to be a giant parking lot on the bulk of this, and that's going to have to drain off somewhere. So I know that by code, you said that they'll be required to design this such that no water, no increase in water will run off of that property than what it happens right now. So I asked Tim Johnson to.
Mr. Munson, you're exceeding your five minutes. I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. I'm concerned about traffic, I'm concerned about water, and I'm concerned about public safety, and I don't think any of that has been taken into account to the extent, to the extent it needs to be before you consider approving something like this.
Thank you. And then lastly, I have Joanne Berneski.
Wow, I would request. As stated, my name is Joanne Berneski. I live at 4105 Northwest 144th Street, and I've been a resident for 30 years, almost. I really do understand the city's desire to develop this land and increase tax revenue. And according to the developer's proposal, that picture there, it appears they're attempting to make a high-end commercial area similar to Chisholm Creek. I'm guessing that. I understand that this rendition is non-binding, and it only infers their current intentions, though. What I'm hoping to express today are ways to mitigate the damages to our existing neighborhoods of Monticello and Remington. Currently, all of this PUD is designated as R1. So when I moved into that house, I thought, R1 all the way. Realistically, I thought, well, maybe along the highway, there might be some commercial. If we widened track two, which is where they're putting their residential, that would give a bigger buffer to all of the Monticello and Remington neighborhoods. And if you keep it as R1, I know I had originally said R2, but let's go to R1. And to keep in line with this Chisholm Creek thing, having lot lines, or lot sizes of 20 feet, 20 feet lot lines, these are itty-bitty, with backyards of only five feet, and then two and a half to three and a half story height structures. If you put homes like that, the Remington developments, our lot lines are 60 to 80 feet long. So it theoretically infers that those existing homes would back up to our new neighbors, would have three or four houses of two and a half stories staring into their backyards. If instead, if in keeping with the proposed upscale commercial district that they're, seem to imply they want to do, if you made it an exclusive retirement community, community with single-story residences, green spaces, and a clubhouse, that would alleviate, I think, a lot of the fears that they have about having all these homes, four houses behind you staring into your backyard, especially those who have pools. So I am requesting an R1 designation, larger lot sizes, increased lot width, single-story restrictions, and reduced maximum building coverage and maximum density. All of those would decrease potential traffic and safety concerns, as well as mollify the concerns of Remington and Monticello. Additionally, the screening regulations, they are talking about 25 feet, which is actually bigger than their lot lines, with cedar fence in between. Any homeowner knows that cedar fence does not last well. Change that to a solid brick or stone, not composite. That would ensure that regardless of the homes that are built, and any homeowners association that is formed in the future, the screening would need minimal upkeep. I would also request that the wall between the development and Remington and Monticello be built prior to beginning development. That would help in reducing the amount of dirt and dust that blows into our neighborhood during constructions. With regard to track one, our concerns are vast, but unfortunately, I don't believe that major changes to the proposal are possible. They want their Shields, they want their tax money. But hopefully, it will mitigate our damages. The flexible zoning classification, the uncertainty surrounding the future development, and the fact that it could substantially change for increased commercial density and other types of development should be addressed before approving the PUD. Height restrictions. We're aware that Shields has a Ferris wheel, and we require additional height allowance. But all other remaining structures should be much more limited, perhaps even a gradient à la height allowance, such as allowing buildings along the highway to have a height story of five stories, a little more reasonable than 12, with the buildings further west gradually tapering to two stories, until track two, which would then become one story. This would keep it as a, reduce the amount of eyesore, and from peeping eyes into the residential areas. Maximum density, I assume this is for the apartment complex they have planned. 600 dwellings, again, seems overly large and would lead to extreme traffic congestion and large safety concerns. Again, if they really do want to do upscale plans, creating luxury units and decreasing the maximum density would increase the value of commercial property, as well as decrease the traffic and safety concerns. And finally, the proposed hotel, the height and the location of this, if you move the hotel closer to the highway, where the proposed height requirements would be more conducive to hotels, and having the hotel face north-south, then that way it would reduce, they would, the guests of the hotels would face the lakes or the proposed development, where, you know, there's a little putt-putt golf course, rather than staring down into our backyards and on east-west view, also the sun in their eye. With all of those in mind, and all of those changes, and just the overall wow going from R1 to all of that, we hope that as members of the planning commission, you consider not only what is best for the developer, but what is best for the surrounding areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Berneski? All right. That's all I have signed up to speak, so that'll conclude our public comment. Commissioners discussion?
Well, first, I think I'd like to hear from the applicant on replying to some of the concerns and the questions.
So I'd start by, I think it's important to recognize that track two, it's 500 feet in width. And so between our western line of track two, which is the residential, and the western line of track one, we have 500 feet. While we're sitting here, I wanted to pull, for reference, the PUD for the Oak, which is one that I was involved in. So the max height allowed under the Oak PUD is 160 feet. So just for reference, the Oak development is, I think, much closer to a single-family residential than perhaps this, and that's 160 feet. There's a large hotel as part of that development as well. Here, the way that this is designed, it's an internal kind of pedestrian corridor in track one, with the hotel being the kind of end cap, looking down this corridor of commercial development that will for sure have a sporting goods store, perhaps you'd also have restaurants and other retail and those things. So the hotel's a very key component to this, and not just the existence of the hotel, but in the location that's shown here. So with that, in terms of the max height, we have a one, within the first 150 feet west in track two, it's a two and a half and 35 feet. That is the same height requirement that you'd see in a standard R1 subdivision. We have a 15-foot landscape buffer along the west side of track two, and in addition, a requirement that there be evergreen trees planted at a minimum of seven feet of height at the time of planting. We also require that the fence be eight-foot, site-proof, stained, capped cedar with brick columns every 25 feet, which in our opinion is more of a heightened standard than you would traditionally see in a residential to residential. So in terms of drainage, this is, of course, conceptual. When we go to build, the engineers will have to do the very expensive studies that show us exactly where and how drainage will be taken care of. Perhaps there are some elements to this that change because of that. We won't know until we get much further along. In terms of traffic, you know, this is a bit of a unique circumstance, in that we are on Portland, and as Commissioner Noble mentioned, it's one way. It's one way to the south down to Memorial. So all of our access, in the short term at least, is going to go out to Portland and south. Impact fees for this development will be very significant. So there will be a significant amount generated from this that the city will have in their coffers to go deploy when there are capacity-related issues. Perhaps there are capacity-related issues that are there. This will simply be able to help fuel those changes that are necessary. So we think it's a development that is appropriate along a major highway in close proximity to multiple arterials that are fully developed with traffic signals. And we think, based upon the limitations we've placed in the PUD, as well as those proposed within our TEs, that we have a development that'll be compatible and hopefully enjoyed
All right. Well, I mean, I can tell you a few thoughts that I have. And I had written down a few things, and it was funny because Ms. Berneski hit on one of them. I was looking at this, and I'm like, "What advantage do you have orienting the site layout as you do east-west? And what if you just took that whole internal and turned it counterclockwise nine degrees and had the hotel down on the south, where it would have the least impact to neighbors?"
Well, it wouldn't face a street, first of all. I mean, there is nothing to connect to, to the south. When you turn right into this development, you're going to be staring right at this kind of pedestrian corridor that will end in the hotel. So it's oriented to the street network that exists.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I follow that, because everybody's coming in on that major inbound street to the north or the south, and they're just, they're coming into parking. I guess you've got one central spine there that you bring in halfway into the site. Anyway, I'm just wondering if there isn't, you know, another solution to this that maybe changes the orientation. The other thing, there's a couple other things. I understand the need for parking with this type of development, but when you look at that, I mean, this thing is 50% parking at least, and, I mean, I'm just envisioning what that looks like from Portland, and it just looks awful in my mind. I wish there would be more developable area up on Portland to maybe enclose this a little bit, and I'd like to see structured parking as an option.
So we can't, you know, we can't commit to structured parking. I mean, what I'd tell you is, although, yes, there's a lot, the difference is now we have landscaping codes that require landscaped parking lots. And so, yes, you'll have a lot of parking. It's impossible to have a major power center like this and not have a lot of parking, but here, they're going to be landscaped. This, of course, is conceptual. We'll have to come through with a specific plan. At that time, we'll know the full details, but this is intended to show you, you know, generally, how it could lay out, how we envision it laying out based upon what we know from the anchor tenant at this point.
And I would imagine, I mean, if you could get less parking in there and have less parking, you would rather have it anyways than have more retail space.
People would prefer more buildable square footage, but parking's going to be dictated by the uses we have and the tenant requirements that they're going to put upon us. No one likes to build parking for the sake of parking.
Right.
And look what's happening at Class and Curve. They have removed, you know, big drainage structures just to get square footage in retail.
And why you can't commit to structured parking, there's a possibility there could be.
Sure, it's not prohibited.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely agree that structured parking is preferable. I understand it costs more, too, but that's why I didn't have an issue with the, back to the height discussion, the 125 feet didn't strike me as a problem, because
It's 600 feet away.
Allowing some more verticality then frees up more sight, and also structuring parking, where you're stacking it, frees up more sight, which also frees up your master plan and provides some opportunity to get people closer to where the actual stores are.
Well, and I mean, there's a general dislike of structured parking from consumers. I mean, the Oak did structured parking because it was necessitated based upon the postage-stamp style of development we had. Generally speaking, consumers of retail establishments don't want structured parking. They don't feel safe in structured parking. They don't, they don't like the logistics of having to get in and out of structured parking. So the structured parking, although it's not prohibited, we can certainly look at it, there is no way we can commit to it. You see structured parking on small development sites.
Right.
Or downtown office.
Where spaces are more of a premium than it is, but doesn't mean it's not right.
I don't know. I mean, we can't sit here and redesign the master plan for these guys. They've got lots of people, professionals, working on this, but I don't disagree with Commissioner Claire's comments on, the master plan could turn. We could add a TE that mitigates where the hotel can be located, if that helps. I don't know. I mean, I get it, and I think you're right about the scale. When you look at this, it's hard, you don't see the scale. 500 feet's a long way, so that strip looks narrow, but it's really quite wide.
Yeah, it looks narrow in this scale, but yeah, 500 feet is a significant distance. And within that 500 feet, you'll, of course, have residential development and landscaping and all those things.
One of the questions I had is the timing of the residential Track 2. If the hotel and everything else was there on Track 1, and then they built those homes, those people could expect to buy something that they can look at and see this tall hotel? But if they built them first, it's, might not be fair if it's not, you know, not a lot of homebuyers go out and search PUD information.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I mean, what I can tell you is, we know with certainty, you know, one or two tenants, and that the first step that you'll see after this will be a plat for the commercial development. So that leads me to believe that the commercial development is going to be developed first.
Okay.
And then, we have no certainty, as we stand here today, who that developer will be. So to your point, there's a high likelihood that anybody that buys in Track 2 is going to have actual knowledge of what's going on in Track 1.
Okay. That's a concern I had, and I appreciate that.
I'll say this, too. On the fence, on the very west side of the property, development of this size, this much structure, this much cost, the developer can afford to put a masonry fence across there to limit any future maintenance of the fence, especially if the residential's not going to be built for a while. And I did that for you, Jeremy.
Thank you. I like it.
Well, and would that be on the setback, on the east side of the setback?
On the...
Or the west side of the setback?
West side.
West side of the setback against the property, I believe, is where they planned to put the fence, right?
Yeah, our proposal is to put the fence on the, on the property line, the western property line of Track 2.
So the setback would be inside the...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify it.
Yes.
Which, masonry fences are common when you have a multifamily development. These aren't multifamily. These are, you know, townhome, which we view very differently than a garden-style. So we would, we would be opposed to requiring a masonry wall along the west side of Track 2.
Yeah, but it's not going to kill the deal.
Well, they're two different deals, right? The person developing Track 1 is a wholly separate developer than who's developing Track 2. Who's developing Track 2 will be a home builder, which is a very different cost metric.
But the developer of Track 1 could afford to put the fence for Track 2.
Well, we think that the fence included in our PUD is appropriate.
I mean, and at 25-foot columns, I mean, I don't think the cost difference is probably even that much on a pre-manufactured fence, so.
We've asked the question via text, but I don't know that building a concrete wall is always the solution, especially here when it's interior. We have appropriate height setbacks. We have two-and-a-half-story and 35 feet within the first 150 feet, which matches what can be done in Remington. And so really, that's what we're talking about, compatibility. So why would a concrete wall make it more compatible for the same height regulations that abut each other?
Again, the height regulation, to me, is fine. It can be eight-foot tall, it can be, and it just needs to be masonry for the longevity of the fence.
And that's all it is. Every time I bring it up, it's longevity, and I'm at the point where, even if we're getting the brick or masonry wall pushed back, that if you want to stick with stockade, mandatory composite, not wood. So there's a, maybe that would be an option, just something that's more sustainable.
I understand. I mean, and what we propose is stained, capped, cedar.
Yeah, there's, there is a lot of undeveloped land there, too.
That's probably never going to be developed, so, I mean...
We're adjacent to existing R...
Yeah, I mean, so again, I guess the question would be, what is the, if we were putting commercial up against it, which I have a case later in the docket, where we have committed to a masonry wall because it's commercial across from residential. Here, where we're touching each other, it's single-family.
Yeah, and I get it. I understand, and there's a 15-foot buffer. I just think that a PUD of this scale, it's not unreasonable to ask.
Say it again?
I said, with a PUD of this scale, it's not unreasonable to ask. And I'm, again, going to just say, adjacent to existing home sites.
Okay. So we could do six-foot masonry where currently existing single-family homes exist along the west side of Track 2.
And you have the tree buffer also, so...
Yeah, we are, and we have the 15 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be good with that.
Trees planted at seven feet in height.
Yep, because I think it's the site, the protection is going to be there at six-foot, and I think that's right. That's a good compromise. And then eight-foot cedar from that corner to the south.
No, I mean, I don't know that, we're not adjacent to single-family, so I don't know that a, I mean, it would be...
Yeah, so the current PUD doesn't have a fence requirement down that way.
I'm fine with that, too. I just didn't know if it was the whole west boundary, because...
It's also floodplain, so we can't obstruct the flow of the water.
Right, and it's a field, so it would make no sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they want to replace it.
Okay, so...
I would, I would just offer that on the south boundary, that that wall should go a little bit further to the south and not just stop right at that last lot. I don't know, 50 feet?
You can do it.
I guess I'd ask what the purpose of going additional 50 feet would be.
Well, just for the, for the resident that's there on that corner lot, the walls is basically going to stop at the corner of his lot, and he's gonna, he's gonna be looking out the back, and he's going to be able to see right into the south portion of that residential.
But is that any different than me backing up to my neighbor right now? And I can see directly into my neighbor's house, what's the difference?
No, it was, it's an idea, so if anyone supports it, great, not...
Right.
And we can stick with the existing language for the area south of the existing development. So we can still have up to the eight-foot cedar brick column as we move south, but the masonry would be six feet where existing homes abut us.
Okay, so the entire west property is getting fenced, is that what you're saying?
Where we're doing development on our side, there will be a reared yard fence.
Perfect.
But there is floodplain and undeveloped things, I know that we can't...
Right, further south.
Where we don't develop.
So that gets it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was...
I heard no wall to the south.
Right.
And I heard no fence because it was floodplain, so...
Yeah.
So it basically will go all the way to the end of the parking lot, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you see that line coming in is where we kind of believe that we'll have to stop development.
Okay.
So in terms of that language, then what I propose is that the wall shall be entirely stucco brick, stone, or other masonry, cementous material, including precast, and shall be solid and opaque.
Six-foot tall.
Six-foot.
If you guys are happy, I just, I hear a lot of murmurs from the galley, and I just...
Well, what I'm seeing, again, with trees planted all the way across there and can't be, the site, you're not going to see it, so six-foot or eight-foot, the two-foot difference on the fence is not going to make that big of a difference. Their existing fences are all six-foot tall.
All right, where are we?
I have a question on TE number three, and maybe for staff. I've never been a part of a preliminary plat coming through that we could modify or talk about modifying certain things in the plat. Am I wrong? We just always made sure it followed the requirements of the PUD or SPUD or not.
Yes, it is very unusual. I mean, for a specific plan, we review it based on the zoning that's adopted. Same with a preliminary plat.
There is precedent for doing this. In the Dream Hotel SPUD, we provided that Planning Commission has the ability with additional oversight than normal, partially because we don't necessarily disagree with staff's TE, but we don't know who that developer is and what that project's going to look like. So we'd rather have that developer come back and say, "We're at 22% or we're at 28% open space, and you can negotiate the design of that project at that time." We're allowing for it to be either the preliminary plat or a specific plan if it ends up being a different style of development that isn't a traditional plat. So you will see it regardless.
We used to do this with signage before the new sign code, and Janice would ensure that the language was that the signage was deferred until the specific plan, with the language specifically granting the discretion to Planning Commission at that time to decide. And so if we, on TE 3, if we, you know, grant the discretion to Planning Commission at the plat or specific plan, that gets you what you need for the authority.
Regarding common area acreage and locations, lot coverage, garages and driveways only. So lot size would already be set on the base zoning request, and the street...
Yeah, meant for all the things in the TE to be deferred until plat or specific plan with discretion granted to Planning Commission at that time.
Okay.
Could we maintain this language and just say that the Planning Commission has discretion at specific plan to alter it?
No.
That's just a thought that we could do?
For those items listed, we can grant you discretion at that time. Who knows? Maybe we have nine people who don't want centralized common areas.
What if your cul-de-sac was too long and you need a variance?
That's different. That would be a subreg that would require a variance.
Okay, but, but it's come, if it came to us as a plat, you'd be requesting that, correct?
Yeah. We couldn't void that through the PUD anyways. We couldn't seek to vary a subreg through this PUD process.
Yeah, and for me, I just want staff to be okay with what that and how that reads.
Yeah, and my point is, is that, and there's no secret here, this is a big push on my part, that I believe PUDs per ordinance require a map, some kind of layout, and this is not that. This is a big, big green rectangle that we have to just give entitlement on without any design. And I'm just trying to make sure that when, the first time we see that, that we have the ability to adjust that if it doesn't feel right or look right or fit right.
Understandable, and absolutely. The zoning code does state that the specific plan is really created for that reason when there is an absence of detail, which is why it's required with a PUD. The reason that we're attempting to do it this way is we're establishing a floor on the requirements for the density and lot sizes. It is wholly possible that a portion of that or all of that come back in a more traditional single-family setting, and if that's the case, you might not be asking for 25% or driveways that are aligned a certain way. And if that's the case, they might not need to adhere to all of that because they might exceed all of it. So we're simply asking that you review all of that at the time when that comes in. We're not attempting to take any of your ability away to sway what that looks like in the future. And based on the PUD, anybody that comes forward is going to be fully aware that they are subject to negotiation on their plat or specific plan when they come before you. We think this is the best way to attempt to address staff, staff's comments, give you all the authority, but also give a developer flexibility.
So on either document, both documents will come before, and with the opportunity to...
Either, yeah, plat or specific plan.
Right, which either come.
That prevents anyone from going and getting a permit before you all have seen it.
But with added language on the specific plan at least, that you have full discretion to review and approve, which is more heightened than what a traditional specific plan application would be.
All right. Now, we're going to lose Commissioner LaFleur chair in a minute. Are we anywhere near motion?
I believe I am.
Could I add, just for clarification, if you're considering, let's see, on the TE with the accesses...
Sub...
Seven.
Yeah, with the subdivision regulation.
TE 4.
Or we can just, right, put a limit. Or we can just, right, put a limit.
Yeah, it's saying, sorry, let me. Yeah, sorry. So it says access per subdivision regulations, but it's actually not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but my understanding is those driveway distances are actually in the, they're not in the subregs, they're in the functional classification plan. So just make that correction.
That's fine, we can modify the word "subregs" to "functional plan."
Just for clarification, so this is a minor arterial, so you're, what you'd be agreeing to would be driveways spaced on 150 feet separation.
Between the two drive.
Driveway, yeah, the driveway separation. No, there's a, there's a, the subdivision regulations regulate street-to-street distances, and there are actually two, so the subregs and the code regulate driveway to street, but the only place that driveway-to-driveway is really captured is in this functional classification plan. And as on a minor arterial, that'd be 150 foot of spacing, where I know normally like 200.
And one of the reasons that that's important on other streets is because you have points of conflict across the street, and of which we have none here, because it's one-way. I'm happy to read these all again, or it's, of course, been sent to staff and all of you, except for the one modification to TE four where we change subdivision regulations to functional plan.
And would we add a TE eight for the fence?
TE seven, oh, yeah, we could add TE eight to be six-foot masonry as described adjacent to existing single-family residential.
Anything else? Good? Okay. Do you want me to read all of these?
I think you're okay. If you, if you want, just TEs as attached and then.
And then eight as amended. Okay, with that, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval to the city, Oklahoma City Council, PUD 2094, with the seven TEs as attached, with the amendment to TE number four to say access per functional plan. TE number eight, a six-foot-tall masonry fence adjacent to single-family residential.
And the masonry as described.
Masonry as described. Proposed, single-family.
No, adjacent to existing.
Existing Remington, single-family.
Oh, you're correct, right, right. And then the, per, per the application.
Correct, for the balance.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Noble. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And that is recommended unanimously to the City Council. Move on now to item 14.
Item 14 is case CPA 2025-8, consideration of a proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan. This is on 18 acres located north of Northwest 122nd Street and west of North Cemetery Road.
Good afternoon, Barreni Mujicortis for the Planning Department. So this is a request to remove the urban future layer from the urban law and to change the base Luda designation from urban law, from urban law to rural medium. The associated zoning application is PUD 2097. It's located in the northwest Oklahoma City. The Luda is urban future. It's, it's important to mention, it has some rural medium to the north and to the west, there's some urban future, but a little farther to the west is all agricultural preserve. In terms of land use, almost all the land use surrounding this area is residential and undeveloped. In terms of zoning, almost everything around the site is agricultural. In terms of water, it falls within the close-to-service, but in this case, the applicant is proposing to use well-water. In terms of sewer services, is within the open shed, but in this case, the applicant, the applicant is proposing to use aerobic septic. We had a study session where we talked about septic systems, so for sake of time, I'm gonna jump this a little bit. For emergency services, it's within the urban response time for emergency services. In terms of a street typology, it's surrounded by a major arterial that is North Cemetery Road. Then we have a minor arterial that is Frisco Memorial, and then to the south, we have a neighborhood, a little bit of a neighborhood that is not well-connected in this area. In terms of the findings, we believe that a small scale, a small-scale residential development with large lots is consistent with the policies of Plan OKC for the rural medium, Luda designation, and supports the preservation of the area's rural character. The proposed development's use of aerobic systems in combination with large lot sizes is less likely to result in significant environmental and health impacts. Designating this area as rural medium, Luda will help preserve the 16 character of the neighborhood by maintaining low-density development patterns, protecting open space, and supporting the area's established rural identity. This designation also helps prevent uncomfortable infield, ensures that future development aligns with the community's expectation for lot size, privacy, and overall aesthetic. Based on the findings, we recommend approval of this application. I don't know if there's any questions.
Okay, I do not have anyone signed up to speak. This is my ward, and I am in support of it, but I cannot make a motion.
Any other commissioners, anything? No. With that, I will make a motion to approve CPA 2025-08.
A motion from Commissioner Noble to approve the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry, and that item is approved. Item 15.
This is PUD 2097, application to rezon 12901 North Cemetery Road from AA.
Good afternoon, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. So this is a companion item to what you just heard. It's a PUD, it's, it's unique in that it's small, it's only 18 acres, and in the PUD, we limit the total number of lots to nine. And so, as staff said, the impact is not what you, I think traditionally have concern with when you see these acreage-style developments. So that's why staff here recommends approval, three TEs. We agree to TE one and two, and then on TE three, we would ask to strike that. It's not common, you have sidewalks in these rural-type subdivisions, and it tends to actually make it worse for drainage and those, those sorts of things. So with that, happy to answer any questions, we'd ask for your approval.
Just a little clarification on that one. This will be kind of a rural section road, no curb and gutter, bar ditches on either side?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which you don't see sidewalks when that's the case.
And what do we have for minimum lot size?
The TE says one, and we agree to that TE. Because traditionally, the RA would allow you to go down to three-quarters of an acre, but here, the TE number one says one-acre minimum, which we agree to.
So we got one-acre minimum on septic, and of course, DEQ's regulation is half. So we're twice that size. We've been pushing for three-quarters?
One. Yeah.
One, all right, so we're.
Yeah, we're, we should be good.
Okay.
I'll just state this for me. I think one acre is too small. All this drainage going central to a located pond, very limited size in your, your spray fields.
So the issue is that it's the same debate that we've had forever, right? It's, it's, I think it's really hard for developers to accept any city creating rules that are not written, right? Oklahoma City has no, has no rule. And so what you do in those instances is you fall back to, well, who regulates environmental quality in the state of Oklahoma?
Poorly.
That would be the ODEQ. And ODEQ has told us that lots even half of this size are appropriate.
Not without.
Not without water, so three-quarter acre. So we're still greater than what at least DEQ has said from an environmental standpoint is reasonable. Now, as I've, you know, as I think a lot of people have said, the city has the authority to go change the rules, but short of rule change, all we can follow are the rules that are prescribed, and that is here through ODEQ. And so we exceed ODEQ's requirements, and so given the small nature of this development, if this was an 80-acre development, I would certainly understand that perhaps we're getting in some, some other concerns. But when you look at the total number of lots on the total acreage, it really presents itself as a, you know, two-acre-style development, given that density limited in our PUD.
I.
Those big old one-acre, two-acre lots.
But, well, you know, in my deal mostly with the two-acre lots are more, a lot more lots than this. I mean, eight, you know, I could get on board with it, I'm not super thrilled about it, but, you know.
I agree with you that there's only eight lots, and I disagree that DEQ regulates any of this. They kind of created a law and then.
They, yeah, they're supposed to.
Just for clarification, there's nine lots. That one in the northeast is a, is a large five, five-acre lot.
Okay.
Well, you do have to permit them through DEQ, so I mean, not regulate it through.
Right, I understand, yeah, they do have that office open to take your application and money, but that's about it after you do it.
Yeah, they don't actually come out there.
But in defense of what we're doing, that I hear a complaint about sometimes from you, is that this is a PUD, and PUDs are negotiable, so. But I am okay with the one acre and nine lots, because I'm on half of that with aerobic.
With.
Bigger neighborhood, which is probably.
In a neighborhood with 150 houses, yes.
Yeah, understand, that's why this one was, in our opinion at least, unique, because of the small scale of it. Where we're having problems is your ward and, and, you know, Mr. Privet's ward, where you're having 80 and, you know, sometimes up to a quarter section taken down.
Yeah, well, its current zoning is, what, agriculture?
AA.
Only need five-acre lot there.
You could get three lots.
That was, that was kind of the thing of that is with, with the whole rule comment, well, the rule on this land is it's AA, that you're asking to change that, so. But I wish it was, I wish they were larger lots, too. When I looked at this before any other conversations, I thought, it's, it's nine, that's, you know, within the, a small enough collection of lots that I feel like the one-acre minimum, if they can hit that, I didn't have a. And fundamental problem, I'd rather see 1.5.
Well, it's, it's an extremely developable area. There's a lot of property all around it. We go with one-acre lots here.
Somebody's coming in with.
Your 800 is coming all around here.
Yeah, right next to it, yeah, well, that's a very good point.
Perhaps you could say the standard is.
Is one acre.
This was only 18 acres, and you brought us too many acres. I had one in Mr. Privet's ward where the, by the time we got to council, he said, it's just too big. So I mean, you know, I, I think every case is unique, and here.
I agree.
The small number of acres is what makes this.
The centrally-located pond was kind of the problem for me, really.
Well, we want everyone to be able to enjoy it.
Lovely green shade.
I thought centrally-located common areas was something that was.
They're fighting over that.
They're working around an existing feature and not filling it in, so.
Centrally-located.
There'd be more sprayfield if it was gone.
You know, I think the important part to consider in this isn't necessarily the lot size, it's the coverage. And that's one thing that, I don't know how you'd define, but I mean, that's really, to me, kind of what it boils down to, is how much of this has, you know, does it have three-quarters of an acre of a house on one acre? You know, but in this case, I think I'm okay with this because of the nature of the size of the development.
Right, and they shrink the setbacks. Right, I believe so.
If this was 10 or more lots, I would say 1.5.
But nine.
1.5, but you've got to set a threshold.
Mr. Noble, the TE two seeks to have the setbacks be per base zoning.
And you agreed to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't think it's ideal, but I mean, it, it doesn't make me uncomfortable, so. I can't make a motion. Commissioner Noble, if you're not in agreement, if there's somebody else.
I'd rather not be hypocritical.
Okay. You have a motion from.
Yeah, all the.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of PUD 2097 with the three attached TEs.
Striking TE three.
Oh, that's right, striking TE three, that's right.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Meek to approve subject to Technical Evaluation one and two, striking three. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended.
Thank you.
Item 16 has been continued. Item 17.
Continued.
Is continuing, thank you. I did have someone sign up to speak on that, so that, what was the date on that? October 9th, so Mr. Collins, if you're still here, that's being continued to October 9th. Item 18.
This is PUD 2092, application to rezon 800 South Sarah Road from O1, O2, I1, and I2.
David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a development that would allow for an industrial facility to be built along I-40. It's currently zoned I2 along I-40, but there's a large swath of O1 that really would not allow for the development of warehouses, which is what we seek. So we, before we came to Playing Commission, anticipating perhaps having issues, there was a neighborhood meeting that was had, kind of talked through the issues, talked through what we propose. What came from that is we've modified the PUD to, I think, get this to a position that is more compatible with the neighborhood to the south, but also allowing what is going to be an impactful development along I-40 and Sarah Road. So some of the changes that came, we have prohibited a series of uses, located on page two, so marijuana operations prohibited, gasoline large, gasoline small, gasoline truck stops, and the two spectator sports and entertainment uses, those have been deleted. We then have provisions for separation from the south with truck bays and overhead garage doors, that being 150 feet from the south, and they shall not face arterials or I-40. Landscaping requirements are heightened, located on page two of your staff report, and I'll, I'll read it. I think it comes from a case we had in your ward, Commissioner Clare, and we say, there shall be no less than a 30-foot-wide continuous landscape buffer along the south boundary of this PUD that will consist of a six-foot earthen berm with trees planted on 20-foot centers that will be a maximum, excuse me, minimum of seven feet in height at the time of planting and shrubbery. So you may recall, we had a development, I think it was a multifamily development, may actually have been in your ward, but you were helpful in crafting that. So 30-foot landscape buffer, earthen berm, trees on top of that earthen berm, which we think is a significant heightened standard from what you would traditionally expect to see, 100-foot setback from the south, and then a 55-foot max height. So all of those limitations, we believe, will allow for development that'll be harmonious with the area. There is one TE we agree to, and then we would ask to. There is one TE we agree to, and then we would ask to add a TE2 that says, well, it's adding to the facade regs to say, "Alternatively, building facade may be concrete tilt-up panels or others similar with a medium textured..." You know what? Read this.
Elastomeric. Come on, Caitlin.
Oh, boy. Okay, Caitlin Turner, 525 Northwest 11th Street. Okay, so under architectural or facade regulations, add alternatively, building facade may be concrete tilt-up panels or similar with a medium texture elast, oh, I see, okay, elastomeric coating. The building's primary facade will be divided into vertical bays not exceeding 150 feet in width. Each bay will be differentiated from adjoining bays through vertical wall articulation, which may include variation in entryway design, parapet or roofline height, and the use of differing but contempor, or, excuse me, but complementary colors. To achieve the required vertical facade articulation, a minim, a minimum variation in building or parapet height of four feet will be incorporated. So, that's, that will be the TE. That, to dumb it down a little bit, is essentially going to allow for the concrete tilt-up walls, but for the elevation to vary, so it's not just one big concrete box. And I do also have... A sample, if anyone is so inclined to see it. This is what we're proposing. It's similar to a stucco product, but I do have this if you are interested.
So, thank you, Ms. Turner. So if you look at this map, you see that really everything else along the highway has been developed. What is stopping this site from being developed is that O1 piece. And so, we believe that the limitations placed in this PUD allow us to move forward of quality development, but also ensure, I think what was the original intent of that O1 piece, to provide the necessary buffer in transition from the south.
Commissioner Meek, this is your ward. I do have someone signed up to speak.
Okay, I'd like to hear from them first.
Okay. Here's Rachel Earls.
Hi, my name's Rachel Earls. I live at 10228 Aberdeen Drive in Yukon, and I appreciate everyone for scheduling the meeting with us. I feel like we addressed almost every question we had. I think the last one is, I just wanted to make sure if we're dealing with distribution, if there could be like a, a time limit where, you know, trucks aren't unloading or loading overnight or something during certain hours.
Our trucks can get in.
I think that was the last concern. And thank you to Jeremy Meek for coming to the meeting as well.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll note hours of operation.
Can you get us in there?
Okay. Commissioner Meek?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, we had a really, a really good meeting. I agree that this is a difficult, this would have never went residential. And so I think this is a good use. I do understand the request for tilt-up, and I'd like to thank Ms. Caitlin Turner for helping garnish that language, because what I wanted to avoid was the solid one elevation tilt-up wall panel all the way down. And so we wanted to, you know, bump up and down and, and look good, and so she's done a good job with that. There's not a lot of TEs here, because at the meeting, they did listen and incorporated majority of, if not all, the changes that we spoke about. I don't know how you feel, David, about hours of operation, I didn't...
Yeah, we, we can't do that, but, again, we think that the, our limitation's not necessary, given the limitations we've placed with landscaping, overhead doors, and setbacks.
Right, we do have the doors where they're, where they're not going to be facing that direction. And we have the, the earthen berm, six foot tall, trees on top, pretty good tight centers, and, and I believe that it'll be, I think it'll be a good fit for everybody, and it extends and improves Southwest 8th coming in all the way through, and then back out on the Sarah Road. So, any other commissioners have any other comments?
I was, it was the outdoor lighting, I was just looking at what's noted there. "All outdoor lighting shall be arranged and installed to minimize glare on adjacent properties and streets." So, the loading bays have been addressed by building orientation.
Right.
Although, is that captured, I mean, we have an exhibit, but do we have anything tying the language in the, this approval to that exhibit for the orientation of loading bays? Or is that written in your...
So that's the, that is written into the PUD, the orientation of the overhead bays.
Okay, okay.
So regardless of...
Oh, yeah.
How this lays out...
Got it.
The requirement will be in the text of the document.
And I do believe it's a city code that all the lights, like parking lot lights, they have to be full cutoff, and that terminology means they don't go out, they go down, so.
I think that's the key, because it's, it's the lighting that is more likely to spill, too, so, yeah.
Yes, you're, you're correct. The old days of the wall packs that have spillover are no longer permitted under the lighting ordinance.
So, so that would be, yeah, I mean, that would, and that goes for wall packs, too? The cutoff?
My belief is, yeah.
Okay. Because I, that was my, that was my thought, is, okay, you've got, if you've got on the south drive, if you've got cutoff light fixtures, but what if they put wall packs on the, on the south wall?
Mm-hmm. Yes, the wall packs have a cap over them that turns down to where it, they do angle down after a certain amount of footage, and that is a, that is an inspected item now.
Okay.
Is that enough to rely on that, or do we need to add a TE that just says no wall packs to the south on buildings?
No, I mean, the, the lighting ordinance has specific requirements where you're adjacent to single families, so it, it covers that to prevent the spillover.
Yeah, I'm finding that. Do I? I appreciate your efforts, Commissioner Meek, on modulating the facade. It's a fraught, it's a fraught area, because sometimes you impose rules that, that don't actually improve the architecture, they, but I've seen the images of this, and I think it's appropriate, and I think the intent's right, and they're good with it, so.
Caitlin can read it again, too, if you'd like to hear it.
Well, actually, I want to hear Commissioner Meek read it.
I'm good.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
Yes. I do not have that language.
I handed it to staff.
Okay, so they do have it. Okay, I'm gonna say what Caitlin said and what staff has, so I'm ready to recommend approval of PUD 2092 with TE1 as written, and TE2 has been read into the record.
We have a motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend the item to City Council, subject to the TEs. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended unanimously. All right, item 19 has been continued. Brings us to item 20.
Item 20 is PUD 2081, application to rezone 10901 North Morgan, Morgan Road from AA.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. This is another one where it was deferred to allow for a neighborhood meeting. It was a very well-attended neighborhood meeting. When this application was first filed, it contemplated a truck stop at the corner of Northwest Highway and Morgan, and then the provision for apartments. Through the protest letters before the neighborhood meeting, we could tell that the significant concerns, aside from just commercial development, were the truck stop and multifamily. And so, in the meeting, we led off with our, our, what we had told them was that we had taken away those two uses. So, the PUD before you now does not have truck stop and does not have multifamily. Additionally, what we've done is we have tried to move the more intense uses to what we are calling Track 2, which is that small track that fronts on Northwest Highway, that's approximately just under six acres. And so what we say under 8.1 is that use unit, the eating establishments drive-in, eating establishments fast food, eating establishments fast food with drive-through shall only be permitted within Track 2. So those, those uses that would perhaps create conflict with single-family residential have now been forced to a spot that are only adjacent to Northwest Highway and not touching any single-family residential. Jerry, would you go to the aerial? This is a bit of a unique property in that you've got frontage on three sides. You've got Northwest Highway, Hefner, and then this little sliver along Morgan. Lot of the discussion was access to Hefner and how you're going to treat that, that Hefner Road. So, what we have done is we've prohibited access to Hefner in, in an attempt to appease the neighbors. And then additionally, we have add, what we're going to add is TE6 that says, "No less than a six-foot and no greater than an eight-foot high wall shall be required along the south boundary of this parcel. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of stucco, brick, stone, or other masonry, cementous material, including precast, and shall be solid and opaque." So we are trying to separate ourselves from the residential folks that exist to the south of Hefner Road. Now, we don't, you know, directly abut them, we do have Hefner Road, but forcing the, the traffic in the view to Northwest Highway, which of course is what is driving the desire for commercial development here. I think there's no doubt that the highest and best use, the most appropriate use for land adjoining Northwest Highway is commercial development. You've got the turnpike just to our east with full access. This, this land is prime. This is the trend for growth in, in our city, is western Oklahoma City. Same family's owned this for approximately 30, 40 years. It's now time that we think it's appropriate that this be developed. So, again, we're adding that TE6, but then we agree to all five TEs contained within the staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have a current site, does staff have a current site exhibit? Because I'm seeing what's on the screen, and I know that that's not the current site exhibit.
It was emailed to staff.
Yeah, so we have one in front of us. I just want, for clarification from the neighbors out there that are looking at the monitor, that is not the, that is not the current version of the site plan, so. This is my ward, so I did attend the, the neighborhood meeting several weeks ago.
There you go.
Great, thank you. If you could just enlarge it a little bit. So I did attend the, the neighbors' meeting a while back, and...
You're almost there.
Almost there. I, I do feel that this is, this has been modified a fair amount, that responded to a lot of the questions and comments and concerns that we heard from neighbors at initial meeting. So, there's been a lot of work on the developer's part to, to make this a little bit more palatable to the neighbors. So I'll be interested, I've got several signed up to speak, so I'll be interested to hear what their current thoughts are on, on kind of the latest version, so. Are we ready to hear from them? Any comments, questions from commissioners? All right, we'll start with Kim Davis.
Kim Davis, and I live at 10221 Katy Line Court, which is in the neighborhood just south of this. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and I am, we know as neighbors that this is going to get developed. It's Northwest Highway. I mean, it is what it is. And David and his firm have been great, we don't have any complaints, they have really accommodated some of our requests. The one thing in that, that I, that I'm concerned about and that we want to talk about is the entrance exit on Morgan Road. That is just over 300 feet. We get a lot of semis. From, from Hefner to Northwest Highway is just, from Curbland to Curdlot is only about a little over 300 feet. A semi is 80 feet long. We are, I sent in some documents to show some photos that we have taken. A semi cannot turn, because Northwest Highway runs diagonal, onto Morgan Road without taking up all of Morgan Road. So cars are constantly backing up on Morgan Road to let the semi onto Morgan Road so we can get on the turnpike. It's, it's going to be bumper cars, because someone coming out on Morgan Road to turn left doesn't realize the cars on Morgan Road are backing up. If they don't back up, then the semis have to sit through a light cycle on Northwest Highway, which backs up Northwest Highway. That's kind of what our big, we did some measuring around other businesses in the area, 7-Elevens on queues and everything, and the shortest distance between an Egress and the closest major intersection, the shortest, was 157 feet. All the rest were between 200 and 400 feet. And that's just our concern of the, this, this area accommodates Yukon Public Schools and Piedmont Public Schools, so the school buses during the school hours are horrendous with the traffic. Hefner's only two lanes, Morgan's only two lanes, and I don't think that's anticipated to expand anymore. And we're just concerned about the safety of people entering and exiting onto Morgan Road when there's just, it's not that big.
I believe we did hear that there's going to be a widening, a right turn, widening on Northwest Expressway.
Yeah.
Also, onto the express, or, so off of the expressway onto Morgan Road and onto the expressway. And they're also going to be doing improvements in the new bond issue.
Okay, so they're going to make a, a right turn lane on, on Northwest Highway, and then where on Morgan?
I think on Mo, just to widen that a little bit to where they're, so they can get across there. And, and I know that the neighborhood was a big push to not get onto Hefner Road, but...
Yes.
For flow, I, I just think to go back to the west, to get onto Hefner Road would be, help alleviate that.
It, I will tell you this, though, if you leave in the morning to go to work...
But if you're trying to go to Piedmont, and you want to get to Piedmont, you can go west, get to Sarah, get off and go around, is, is all I was saying for flow, rather than to try to get onto Morgan and come around.
You're saying existing neighbors, not from the new development?
No, even the people in new development, maybe you went in there for coffee or whatever you get, but if you wanted to go back to the west, rather than try to get onto Morgan to try to get onto the expressway to go west, you could go west on Hefner Road, get to Sarah, and get on the expressway. Just for flow, to me, it seemed like it was a better way to do, that's all.
I, I, I see what you're saying, but none of these people are going to agree with you, because they sit there, because of the, especially during school.
Right, it queues, and that's what I mean, it queues everywhere, all the way down Hefner, down Morgan, down Hefner, and so...
But you can't get out of our neighborhood...
Yeah.
...to go to work, unless somebody's polite and lets you out. You can't, you're just sitting there forever.
And like you said, this is going to be developed, and so there will be...
No, we, we get that.
There will be more cars, I'm just trying to get more flow to get out.
Yeah, no, we get that, and I just wanted to note that we were concerned about the safety and the accidents, because Morgan Road, people back up as much as they drive forward. And I mean, that's obviously going to have to stop, but...
But maybe, maybe even if you just had a western only out of the back of the store on Hefner.
Maybe of what?
Only you could go west.
West.
Exit.
You're, you're, I'm not making that decision...
Yeah, I know.
...because all of these people are...
I'm just trying to get the people out of there, rather than to go...
No, I get it, and I don't know what's the...
East to Morgan Road to the expressway to go west.
I don't have the answer to this. The far west, is that a road, or is that field?
It's field.
It's field.
Yeah, you, I'm just saying you could go west down Hefner to Sarah and out onto the expressway.
No, I, I, yeah, I agree that's a way to go out, but you're not going to get any of my neighbors to agree with that, because they can't get out of the neighborhood as it is. And our neighborhood doesn't have, there's no alternate way to get out.
Right. Well, and the amount of people that are going to queue onto Morgan Road coming out of this development is going to be incredible.
Oh, it's, no, we are...
So I was just trying to get another access to get some people away.
Traffic-wise, this is going to turn into a nightmare.
Yeah, and there's nothing you can do about it because of the angles of the expressway and Morgan Road.
Right. And, and I, like I said, we know it's going to get developed, it's Northwest Expressway, we're not stupid, it's just, and traffic's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, so, so I'm on the proposed bond projects for 2025, which the vote for that's going to be in October. What they have indicated is that resurfacing of Hefner west of Morgan, widening of Morgan from basically on-ramp to on-ramp, so the off, the off-ramp coming south to the on-ramp going south, and then a widening of Northwest Expressway to the east of, east of Morgan, and I believe that includes some additional turn lanes. But, so there are anticipated improvements that they're looking at for the area.
Okay.
And then, and that's for the, that's for the bond that's going to be voted on. I believe what you were talking about is...
October 15th.
There's already improvements...
Right.
...funded and, and ready to go, so it sounds to me like two sets of improvements to that intersection, or there's potentially two sets of improvements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Phil Shadid.
I'm also asking permission for my neighbor, Cliff Jonas, because he, he was here, he had to go pick up his kids, so there were some things I was going to add from what he wanted.
Okay, I'll give you a couple extra minutes.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you so much. Yes, and so, I am one of the legal prot, oh, my name is Phil Shadid, I live at 10820 Russler Lane, on the corner of Russler and Hefner. And from what I'm hearing from this conversation, there's going to be some changes, but Hefner's still going to be two lanes, right?
As far as I know.
And that's not going to change anything, and in fact, it's going to get worse if you change anything. That, most of the folks that have, I would say, most of them, people move into the neighborhoods for security, not to be compromised, and most people move on acreages, five acres, half acres, to get space, to get away from all this. People have lived, you've mentioned that this, these people have this property twenty, thirty years, where these people also have had these property at least that long, some of them. We've been in that house for a little over twenty, twenty-two years, or something like that. So, when you move to an area like that, you want that. That area is a buffer, and when you get to this part here where it narrows, it's just insane to think that you're going to do anything right there. I already pick up trash from good old boys that throw their beer cans on their way home on Hefner, you know, whoever it is, whatever, and, you know, we have people courteously that come and clean up along the side of Hefner, because that's my property there. And if you put something there, you know, it's just going to create all kinds of problems, where you're going to have a, the whole structure, I'm going to have even more trash, we're going to have vagrants, we're going to have people climbing over six-foot walls, fences, whatever, you know, eight-foot is, is, I mean, I was pretty athletic growing up, six-foot for me was nothing, I could hurdle over anything like that, I was a high-rise window washer, so I don't have a problem with heights and things like that. But there are people that differ with me, and I wanted to bring up some points about some people in, in this circle. You know, I talked with Kim, and Kim and I, for the most part, are on the same page, but maybe we're, I'm, I'm total in opposition, I don't compromise at all, and the reason is, and something I wanted to bring to light here is, is our conversation was, from her, the head of zoning has decided this is going to go, this is not going to stay ag, this is going to, so, we have the, what we call the legal opposition, or the legal protest, which I'm assuming has to go to fifty-two percent. So, I'm asking for a continuation for this reason, because I believe there's some people that have been, I don't want to say they've been deceived, they've just been misinformed, they need to understand that they have that ability to say, no, I don't want this. But in this meeting we went to, we were, I feel like we're compromised, you know, I'm sitting there listening, he and I didn't get along very good, but maybe we'll get past that someday. So, in this whole process of, of this meeting, I mean, it, for me, it's a concession, it's to say, I'm okay with this. I'm not, I'm not, it diagonally is the, is the common denominator here. You've got an area that's coming to a point, it's just not a good spot, it's just not a good spot to do this, you're going to create all kinds of problems. You go up the road a little ways, you've got the, the on queue, that's a whole different backdrop, it's completely different. On this little spot, it's just, there's just no room. I mean, it is a buffer for these neighbors to have their, their homes, they're probably, they wouldn't be building these homes here on these one acres, two, five acres, or whatever, if they didn't have, you know, if they knew that some business was going to be right there or something of that sort. So, at this point, I'm in total opposition of this. If I'm forced to compromise with it, that'll be on the next level, but I'm asking for a continuation for my neighbors that know, the ones that are in the legal three-hundred feet range, to know that they can send letters to say that they don't want this at all. They have that right, and I know you, I know you all believe and understand that, it's a democracy, we have to respect it. And I will say that I had a nice, long visit with the pastor in the church, and his, his whole position was, is what does the community want? If they want, if they want what, what he wants, what, what these people want, I have nothing to say about it, I can't, I have no control. But, but I, their voices need to be heard, we're not just one voice, we're many, and everybody needs to know that they need to send their letters in to the emails and get the point across, you know. I'm no expert on this, but, but I believe the voices need to be heard, and I believe you also need to understand, there's a pond there in that area where there will be flood, there's already problems. And, and nobody knows that little spot better than, than the people that live in that neighborhood, and especially somebody that lives on that corner. Those, I'm right there, I mean, I am right on the edge of that street, and you put yourself, I ask you respectfully, gentlemen, ma'am, you put yourself in- You put yourself in that situation, you put, you put yourself living in the house on that corner and say, hey, somebody's going to build a business right there across from you. I mean, there wouldn't be a twenty-foot wall that, that you'd want from something like that. And I believe that speaks for me and for my neighbor. And, and if we can, I would appreciate it respectfully if we could have that continuation to get, to get those respected votes in, because they were misinformed, there was a meeting plan, and these people go to this meeting thinking they have to accept this. And, and there's compromise one after the other, oh, we'll, we're not going to do a wall, or we will do a wall, we'll do six-foot, we'll do eight-foot. I mean, I think I sent a message back, even if I was going to accept, it had to be at least eight-foot, and it would have to be much farther away, I don't know what the distance and the perimeters are, but to be much farther away from Hefner, because-
Okay, Mr. Shadid.
You've got to be able to drive through, you and I had a long conversation about this, so respectfully-
Yeah, so, all right, thank you very much.
Can we have the continuation?
We will, we'll discuss it when we're done hearing from everyone.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Terry Austin.
It's a hearing on behalf of Mr. Austin, Ed McConnell, I'll be very brief in comments, we would just reiterate what Mr. Shadid had just said. Mr. Austin is the owner of a one-acre tract adjoining there on the east, and he's concerned about being landlocked, and we would just join with the other residents of initiating, initiating a protest on behalf of this being a longtime residential area that would be very disruptive to the overall plan of the area, and we would join with Mr. Shadid in request of continuance. Mr. Austin's main concern is his one-acre tract might be possibly landlocked because of this development, in addition to all the other matters that have been mentioned here this afternoon.
Where, where is Mr. Austin's property?
He's, I'll be just west of track two on Northwest Expressway. If you get right there where you put your hand, I've got a one-acre tract right there, and they, they put that with this same PUD, when they, evidently, when they made that a PUD, they made that commercial, and they put that little one-acre tract in there as well, as a PUD. And I spoke with them at the city, and they're telling me that if I develop that piece of property as commercial, I won't be able to use that east avenue for access to the commercial property. I would have to put a drive in there, and it's my understanding that those driveways have to be three hundred feet apart on that military highway, is what they're calling it. Someone told me that's a military highway, and they're not supposed to be but three hundred feet apart. And if they count Davis Road, which would be back to the west of there even further, if they count that as, as one of the entrances off of that highway, off of Northwest Highway, then three hundred feet from there would just put it on the other side of East Avenue. So then the next three hundred-foot entrance would be on the PUD that's up for review today, which would landlock me. And I don't have a problem with that, as long as I'm going to be able to have access to my property, so if they come in on their track and make a street or a driveway, and, and make it go onto my property, allow me to come in on the east side of my property, that would solve my problem, and that's the only complaint I would have.
Okay, all right, understood.
My name is Peggy Trokey, and my address is 11212 East Street. So, I'm familiar. You have the lot one?
Ma'am, if you could speak into the microphone, so we-
You have lot one?
Yeah, I'm in front of your box.
Yeah, I thought that was owned by Terry Austin.
That is.
I haven't seen you in so long. My concern is traffic. I, it depends on the time of day that I go out. It can be backed up all the way from Morgan Road to East Street, and you say that, well, there's going to be improvements, and they're currently doing improvements, but facts are facts. There's more subdivisions going in, the traffic is there, it will fill up, it will be utilized by what's there. Emergency vehicles coming through on, from the hospital, the fire department, if they can't get through because there's so much traffic because of development, what child will die? What parent will be lost? What house will go down in fire? You have to think of what is there that needs to remain at a certain level. It would be great to have widening, and Hefner Road, I feel sorry for those people over there, they don't have any shoulders on their road even. And if, when I drive down to get on Morgan Road, turning right, I see these cars all backed up trying to get up Morgan, trying to get off onto Morgan from Hefner, don't put development in before there is the roads to accommodate it. You know, and I'm, I feel for the people that own that property and they want to develop it, that's why they kept it this long, that's why they purchased it, but at the same time, at this point, because of all of the development that has gone in, it's no longer consistent with any kind of commercial, commercial development. And I, I apologize to have to tell them that, but, you know, it's, it's just gotten so out of control out there, and there's more and more subdivisions going in. And I did look up online to see how the turn will be, and the additional area that was going to be utilized to turn right off of east, I mean, off of Northwest Expressway, that's a great idea, but at the same time, those people can't get too much farther before they're affecting Hefner Road and Morgan. Actually, it may even cause that more of a backup, because more people can come through there faster. And so, it, it's just a situation where I can see it all the way down to my road, and my heart goes out to people that live on Morgan or to, on Hefner.
Thank you, Ms. Trokey. Ray Thomas? Ray? No? Cliff Jonas? You spoke on his behalf earlier, okay, thank you. All right, then last, we have Brandon McEcam, Echum? I apologize for that.
Oh, no, I'm quite used to it, so I always joke at work that I didn't change my name to Jones or Smith. So I'm Brandon McEchern, and I live at 10501 Russler Lane, directly south of this planned area, so here with a lot of neighbors. And as you can tell, a lot of us here to represent, and I know a lot of them do the continuation, we're unable to make it, so there's a little more opposition than what appears here. A couple of things that we wanted to mention discussing the possible access on Hefner is that was actually in the PUD, it was already agreed to, no access to Hefner. Hefner is a very narrow two-lane, no shoulders, I think was already mentioned, even at that, it is very narrow. As far as taking that west and heading to Sarah, that is also a very narrow. I pass school buses taking my kids to school, attempting to go that way, and a full-size SUV cannot pass a school bus safely and both remain on the road. I pull over even as they travel to let them pass on by, because it is that narrow. If you take it to the south and attempt to come around to get on the turnpike, that road is in such a state of disrepair and just as narrow that it is not at all drivable. This area is such a choke point, a corridor here, and as has been mentioned previously, the growth right now is moving northwest, so we're really going to have to think about how the city manages growth here without girdling itself. And I would almost propose that track one there needs to be, I know a lot of people don't like it, but eminent domain by the city for road use there. This is such a choke point, it's indescribable. Hefner Road, again, then, is very unusable in track three without dumping everything back to track two. I mean, the eastern side of track one is so short of an approach that having egress there to Morgan, even if Morgan is widened, doesn't seem real feasible. The city might do better to grab a portion of that for Morgan, for those turn lanes, and if anything at the most, maybe allow something on track two. But Hefner and any of the roads, any way you circle around it, would not support any kind of traffic coming out of track three. So, I appreciate your time and listening to me. Anything else?
Thank you. All right, that's everyone I had signed up to speak. So, Mr. Box, do you have any response to anything that you heard?
Well, yeah, sure, so in terms of the contingency request, you know, we, we would not agree to that. This was deferred three separate times, as you can see on the, the front page of your memo. We, our hope was to modify it in a way as best we could, understanding that Northwest Highway is perhaps one of the most major commercial corridors we have in Oklahoma City. And adjacent to Northwest Highway, you have the turnpike, what you see just north on Morgan Road is the turnpike, so this is going to be commercial. We thought it was a fairly large concession to, to say no access onto Hefner, and then in addition, require that masonry wall along Hefner. We've forced all the heavy traffic uses to that track two, which is fronting only on Northwest Highway. We've imposed limitations, or excuse me, setbacks to the south boundary of the PUD, so we think we've done everything necessary, excepting the fact that this is, this is Northwest Expressway. Expressway. In terms of traffic, I don't, you know, I don't know there's anything we could do in this PUD to address the traffic other than what we've done by prohibiting access onto Hefner. The gentleman that spoke to the landlock parcel, I'm not sure I understand what he's referring to. What you see in the white dashed line is a legal description of what my client owns, what we submitted, what our letter of authorization shows. I think what he was saying is, you know, he fronts Northwest Highway, so he's got access there. Nothing about what we're doing within this PUD application would in any way limit his access rights. So-
I think the point there is, so this is ODOT. I believe it's an ODOT-controlled road. There'd be a driveway permit required from ODOT for anything on the Northwest Expressway. I can't verify the 300-foot separation on what ODOT's requirements are, but, so. But I think what he was getting at is, if you have a driveway on the east end, then he's going to fall within that 300 feet.
Well, state law does not allow parcels to become landlocked. His parcel absolutely is legally entitled to have access to a public thoroughfare. It just, it can't happen.
I mean, do any other commissioners see a benefit to a continuance? I mean, I don't, my understanding is this is so that more residents can have time to submit that they weren't aware and didn't have, or weren't aware that they could submit opposition. I mean, no matter what recommendation goes to City Council, there's going to be six to eight weeks before a final decision is made. So in my mind, that's plenty of time to submit opposition. And again, no matter what the recommendation is, you know, you have the ability to go to the City Council meeting and contact Councilman Carter Ward One before then to let him know your thoughts and concerns on the item. Any other comments, thoughts from commissioners?
I mean, I certainly appreciate the concerns of neighbors and change and development is not always agreeable and pleasant. I understand the thoughts of, imagine if you had to live there. That's what we do, and I think we all tend to imagine this, is what would we think if we were there? But we also have private landowners with property on Northwest Highway that is appropriate for commercial development. So that's why I'm, as much as I don't disagree with any of you, I don't see it as how we can deny this application with what's been done.
Yeah. I mean, it's, the area is completely set up for commercial development, and even with the close proximity to the neighborhoods, to the south. And unfortunately, and then one of the comments was, you know, hey, all these traffic improvements need to be made prior to development occurring, and we fight this battle all the time. That's just not the mechanism that we have here in the city of Oklahoma City. The development has to come first and drive the traffic improvements, the street widens, the intersection improvements. That's just the mechanism that we have to work with. It's not perfect, but it's what we have for right now.
Anything else? Ready for a motion?
I think so.
If that, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of PUD 2081 to the City Council.
A motion to recommend the item, subject to the technical evaluations.
Including the additional one.
Including the additional one.
That's read.
Refreshing.
I don't remember. Okay. Sarah Zastner, I read it again.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is TE six. No less than a six, no greater than an eight-foot-high wall shall be required along the south boundary of this parcel. Said walls shall be constructed entirely of stucco, brick, stone, or other masonry, cementous material, including precast, and shall be solid and opaque.
All right. So I know the motion was by Commissioner Noble. I didn't see who the second was.
Bobby.
Oh, Commissioner Newman. Okay. Please cast your votes.
Click on the letter on the computer. You're on. Just say yes.
All right. And that was recommended unanimously. So again, just for the neighbors, six to eight weeks, this goes to City Council for their approval. Item 21.
Item 21 is PUD 2100, application by, to rezone 8100 Melrose Lane from I-3 to PUD 2100.
Once again, David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is the applicant. They've flown in to be here this afternoon. I'm sure they're very excited that they were placed last on the agenda so they could see how Oklahoma City's planning commission process works. So what is proposed in this development is, would be a multifamily development. It's currently zoned I-3, which is kind of rare. We understand that. If you look at the area and look at what the recent development trends have been on the north side of the railroad track along Melrose, you've had the mobile home park. I was involved in that and various aspects of it. It's now moving forward. The SPUD 1208 are senior apartments that are relatively new. So you have kind of all residential north of Melrose. What we have done in an attempt to try to ease any potential conflict with the industrial to our east in our site is that we have fencing requirements we've added. We have a 40-foot landscape buffer along the eastern side of the project. So all of those things combined, we think will allow for a development to coexist with that development to the east. So there are a handful of TEs. We would ask to strike TE one. We agreed to TE two. On TE three, we would ask to amend it to read, no less than a six, no greater than an eight-foot-high wall shall be required along the south and east boundary of this parcel. Said walls shall be constructed entirely of stucco, brick, stone, or other masonry, cementous material on a continuous footing, or it may be constructed of capped metal fence panels, and shall be solid and opaque. We agreed to TE four. TE five, we would simply ask to modify that to be upon the issuance of a building permit rather than submittal of a building permit so that when we are in construction, we're not building the road to tear it up during dependency of the construction. So understand the concern to have the road built, but we would like to have that at the back end rather than the front end so that when people are moving in, it's a nice product. CL. Yes. Happy to answer any questions.
I didn't hear a last Americ.
The what?
I, last Americ wasn't in there when you- Commissioner Meek, this is your ward?
Yes, and we don't have anyone signed up to speak.
I do have signed up, I think I have someone signed up to speak, but it may be the applicant. Matt White? The applicant?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No, you're not. Okay. All right. Okay, very good.
Come on down.
Good afternoon. I'm Matt White, representing Schwartz Paving. We have the asphalt plant and the two locations blocks. Right there on Reno Street, right off Falcon, would be Northwest First and Northwest Second. And then we have some land across there. And I'm helping Schwartz with this, but I used to own the land years ago and developed. So I've worked a lot with Mr. Box in the past, had several meetings. I think we were shocked just to see the initial deal come down, that the area around us, which is all zoned industrial, back behind us, I-3, that asphalt plant's been there since 1944. Of course, that was in city limits of Oklahoma City, but way away from everything else. We understand Oklahoma City's growing, and we take advantage of that. We do development every day at Schwartz, ready-mix and paving, so we're not against development one bit, and I owe it at all. We just think it's good development and healthy talk. I don't think, this is the first time we ever saw any kind of plans on this at all. I think we were kind of shocked and taken back by an apartment complex being adjacent to a ready-mix plant, which I've talked of Van Eaton on one side, also a Quick Creek, which is another ready-mix place on the other side of that, and then another ready-mix place in the Dirk Company dining and oilfield services back behind. It's just all right there is some of your heavier I-3 industrial use areas in Oklahoma City. Once again, I think we just need to look and comprehend of what's going on. I know Mr. Box developed that area there where the RV, or the trailer park was. You know, there were some miscommunications. There was also some delays on that because of utility movements. So there are things that drop the ball, and they're all questions to be asked. I don't, like I said, I don't think that anybody in that neighborhood that we've talked to is for the unknown, is for apartment complexes around industrial. We have safety concerns. We all have towers. We all have equipment. We have, some of us have wash pits. Now, we have to contain those for our liability, and everybody else does also. But having that, said that, you know, kids and fences, and you put a apartment complex in, that could change anything. So we, we'd like to have some input of what the functionality of that. Like I said, the very first time we've seen this was today. I think it'd be good, Mr. Box does this very well, and he and his team, set meeting up with the neighborhood people, with the businesses around there, so it kind of helped us feel what the flow is. So I guess what I would ask you today is, is that if we could postpone this or table this until we set up a meeting up with some of the neighborhood people to understand the flow, exactly what's going to be back there, what the buffer zone would be, have our concerns shown of what we need to sew up, what needs to be buttoned up as far as fencing, site proof that, you know, that we might have to have on our side. So it could be a good project. I don't think anybody's against the project. We just don't know what the project is. And we'd like to have the neighborhood be more of a part of that and have a say in that. And I know, once again, I know Mr. Box, I've worked with him several times in the past, and he does a very good job of understanding and the flow, but we need kind of a meeting to understand what we can do. So my deal is either to not do that because we don't know really what's going on, because it could be a PUD and we could not fully understand, but if it's just a rezone, we have concerns. If not, we'd like to absolutely have a continuance to make time for the neighborhoods to have input and have an option to at least let the developer know our concerns and maybe work together. Once again, we are not against development at all. We know Oklahoma City has to grow. We take advantage of that every day, and we're okay with that. But good growth is good positive consternations. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Meek, actually, sorry. Is there anything that you want to say?
Well, yeah, I do know him, worked with him extensively in the past. We do have some contractual issues. There's about a six-week delay. We'd love to be able to spend the time between now and council meeting, and if there's additional changes that need to be made between that, then so be it. So based upon where we are with closing dates and such, we really need to kind of keep it on this current track if possible, but absolutely commit to meet in the next six weeks.
And I understand your timeframe, I understand your timeframe, but you're wanting to put an apartment complex back behind a completely PUD, SPUD area with concrete plants, asphalt plants, trucking companies, everything else. And this is the first time that we saw a four-story building up here, and then yet you're wanting us not to wait, you know, we can maintain your six weeks. There wasn't anything in this application that was sent to us with the picture or anything else, the LLC that we knew nothing about or anything else. And I understand the process. Once again, I was Mayor of Reno for 15 years. I understand the process completely. The bottom line is, is that this is a major deal, and we really are trying to get the neighbors, and they are upset. I think the short notice kind of got them. Regardless of the notifications, they had ample time. We are concerned with the safety, the fire concerns of what are, you had the highest use of I-3 in this location in Oklahoma City. You have asphalt plants that are permitted. You have concrete plants that are permitted. You have PUDs and SPUDs that are around there that do this. So the timeframe might put it in inconvenience, but if we don't address these, if we do not address these issues, just because it goes on to City Council, we had to be part of that process. Once again, if we want to be good neighbors, which we do, and we are, and we do this process every time, we want to have ample time to have our voice heard and our concerns. We might be able to get it all worked out in a room. But timeframe-wise, they should have done a little legwork, came knocking on our door, told us what we wanted to do, visited with us, had our concerns out there, we maybe worked it out. But the bottom line is to show us a preliminary study right here after this comes up, all the way around I-3, your highest zoning in the city of Oklahoma City, along with the most intensive use that you have from the permitting side, from DEQ, from wastewater, everything you have, every one of these entities have to have that, more so than this. So yes, we would absolutely, unequivocally, please give us a ride as property owners and of landowners that were there before some of the developers, that we are not against, but let us have the opportunity to discuss these concerns with them, and we are absolutely asking you to table this to give us time to set a meeting up to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Matt, what was your last, your last name?
White. W-H-I-T.
Okay, got it.
It's probably one of the better names you had pronounced today.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to jump in here if you don't mind. This one baffles me. I'm talking to my fellow commissioners. This baffles me. We have no protesters for the most part, and I believe one of the reasons why is because there's a mobile home park that hasn't developed yet, and the notification hit a bunch of big LLCs and heavy industrial, heavy I-3 use. I spoke to Ms. Caitlin about this one. I said, this one blows my mind because you have a landowner that wants to keep I-3, the heaviest type of zoning, noxious odors, concrete dust, loud noises, et cetera. They're asking to keep that. But then again, on the other hand, you're sitting here saying, this is perfect for an apartment complex, warm, fuzzy, you know, let's put, stack up people here in this location. I said, you can't have your cake and eat it too. I understand staff's attempt that if this is approved to lower their I-3 request back to I-1. I asked our applicant about that. They said, absolutely not. They're wanting to keep both. I don't agree with that. I also know that even if we approve this today, between now and council, there will be protest. There is things coming that did not make it here today. I've received contact from Westin District, Robin, and I've had two other emails regarding the dangers of putting an apartment complex by all this concrete dust. But no one showed up today. And so I can't, you know, I can't speak for these people if they're not here, but you need to know they will be attending between now and then. I'm looking to some, for some advice from the other commissioners on this, what you guys think.
I-
That is crazy.
Go ahead.
I mean, I-3 or, I mean, that doesn't make much sense to me.
Yeah, it's weird that it's an either-or.
I mean, does that mean you could do both? You do apartment and then, you know, put in a new batch plant next to it?
No. That was-
Or once you do one, it becomes the other?
What you do want, so the TE, one of the TEs addresses that. Once we move forward with the multifamily, we would have to amend to remove that I-3. That's in place so that if the rezoning were approved and the closing doesn't happen-
Yeah. We got that, but still.
But if it's denied, they don't lose what they had anyway, right? It's I-3.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
If it's not approved, then nothing changes.
I do appreciate the change to put the concrete block masonry wall on the south. Let's talk, you know, railroad track. They're going to block off, put an R4 multifamily up against a railroad track, needed a solid wall. Then I asked for the east side, you know, for us to even talk about it because we got to separate this heavy I-3 from an R4, if we were even going to talk about it. But the more and more I talk about it, man, it's a, it's a big ask. And they're asking for both to be able to have the entitlement for both, and it's the far opposite extremes of zoning. And so I just, I don't know. Thoughts?
My concern is all the heavy truck traffic, you know, and now you start to mix in residents and apartments.
Little cars and pedestrians.
I think that's, I mean, we have industrial areas for specific reasons, and it's to kind of help with those conflicts.
Right.
Well, I don't dis, oh, sorry.
Full disclosure, my business is on industrial drive, and I have a Deleese plant at the end of my, at the end of my street. And you think these heavy I-3 users, they're going to catch nine kinds of you-know-what if there's an apartment complex. they're gonna catch nine kinds of you-know-what if there's an apartment complex, improved road or not, with these trucks coming in and out, and, you know, and, and I know they won't come all the way to them, but everyone coming out of the apartment would be coming through this mess. And it is, to me, you put, you mix a... Another question I had for you, David, is, I understand tying the CO to the Melrose Lane improvements, but I couldn't find where you're, you're talking three stories, correct? Maximum amount of units, did we have that set, or was that an ask ever? Because I can't find it.
Yeah, so it equates to about 10 units an acre. I think it's, let's see here...
Total number being?
288 as far as this is.
Yeah. So, 288 dwelling units, which equates to 9.68 dwellings per acre.
Okay.
So, client was able to communicate with who they needed to. We can defer this two weeks and go visit. We'll say, you know, the comment of introducing this to it, I mean, the residential's been introduced to it already. I mean, Spud 1208 is directly across the street. If we think about the typical wind patterns in Oklahoma, it's out of the south. So, perhaps it's even more impacted than what this is. Maybe we have things we can put into the PUD that will ease concerns of everyone, but everything around it, I get that they exist, but everything around it on the north side is residential. You've got a mobile home park, you've got R2 duplexes, you've got multiple R4 apartments that exist immediately across Melrose.
I understand. And, and I would ask some of my fellow commissioners to go park there, because when you're looking north, it's not that big a deal. When you're looking east or south, you're like, holy moly, this is crazy. And, and so, you got this mixed feel, and that we don't have a room full of protesters is different on this, and, but I'd ask, I appreciate the deferral, and I'd ask for y'all to go take a look at it, because I was really on the fence being at that location, depending on which way you're facing. You know what I mean?
Sure. Yeah. Well, and I'm not aware of any protests you refer, I mean, we were unaware until moments ago that we had protests, so.
Right.
We were about three...
Yeah, and once again, I'll go on record and say, our notification process is not very well good in Oklahoma City, you know? If there'd have been a sign on that, on that location, people would have known.
Right.
But here we go.
All right. Can I, I was gonna introduce just a point for discussion here. TE number four, an application to amend the comprehensive plan and remove the heavy industrial layer shall be submitted with the first specific plan for residential use, or with the first residential plat, if a specific plan is not required. So, for one of the comments about more time and more discussion, it appears here that we'd see this again as far as the residential use.
Yes.
Yeah, so if it goes apartments, there will be another item to review.
Right. So, it doesn't just go away, it doesn't just go away, no matter if you just start building on it, it's still there, but...
So, well, yeah, and I'm just, I just wanted to make that point, and if we wanted to defer, I think that's still a good idea, so.
Also, the question is, zoning's gonna change, it's still I-3, is what it is, is what's to be reviewed, so the timeframe will be more for us to get the word out, and let us, I won't be finished with it before we leave, because we can resolve that before. To show the neighbors, once again, I think it goes back to the deal, and I'm a developer too.
Mr. White, we're, well, we're pretty much past comment, and we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Box has had his time, I just want to make sure that we're developers too also, and the timeframe is, is that you have to do your diligence of that, and if the money goes hard or whatever else, that's not on our point. We're here at the process of where it starts, and we're here now for the zoning and for the housing deal, and it says on the notice that you all provided with us, basically, that, we got more information on the one today than we did the notice we got in the mail. It says, purpose used to request to allow heavy industrial and/or multifamily residential use, and that's why you said, I don't know if we have a protest or not, because I put, we want to discuss it. If the guy come up here and wanted to leave it at I-3, we wanted to make sure that, and he wanted to have a equipment yard there that fits in with everything else, we weren't gonna say one word, we were gonna, you know, patting on the back, let us know what we can do, and move on down the road. But then when we just see, come in here, and when I go back and tell the neighbors that there's gonna be three-story buildings with apartment complexes with, you know, 800 people living back there, I don't think that's enough time. I don't understand why we're trying to help a developer when the neighborhoods need the time to do this. And, and it's funny how we had all the other people here before, and they had all of their people, that they had meetings and everything else, and now we're taking an area that where we did due diligence back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s to go there and get outside of residential areas to go into an area that we couldn't do it, and we understand development where it comes into us. But we want more time, and I just don't know why we can't table this for a period of time. I mean, it's not gonna change.
That's where we're going.
Yeah. Yeah. Unless anyone else has any more comments, I'm gonna make a motion to defer PUD 2100 to the October 9th Planning Commission calendar.
All right, we have a motion to defer the item. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman, please cast your votes. And that item is deferred. All right, item 22.
Item 22 is consideration of a resolution amending the comprehensive plan, updating and clarifying the document, including various text and... This is a, Baneri's gonna walk us through this. It's a, I felt like it was, the changes were minor enough that it wasn't, we didn't need a study session, we could cover it in fairly short order in the planning commission meeting. So, with that, I'll...
Fairly short order, stressed.
It's gonna be fast.
Sorry, I have an anniversary dinner to get to, so.
It's gonna be fast. Baneri Mujica Ortiz, Planning Department. So, like Jeff mentioned, we usually do like a big update every two years with Plan OKC, but because development is moving faster, and things are moving faster in the city than almost 10 years ago when Plan OKC was approved, we decided that instead of doing a big update every two years, we're gonna do smaller updates more often, just to, so these update, and we usually do a study sessions. We didn't do a study session for this one, because almost all of, all of it is updates to maps and some areas of the, of the plan that didn't really require a big discussion. So, like I mentioned, some of the updates is basically, we're gonna remove the urban future layer from some, some of the urban low line use typology areas. We're gonna remove some TOD layer from some areas too. We're gonna do some updates to the sewer service map, to the water service maps, and emergency fire service map. We updated the riparian areas map. And then, we did already discuss in a study session, the indicators a couple of years ago, like two years ago, we're just gonna add to the official updated document, the indicators updated, and then we're just gonna amend the history of the, of the document. So, basically, the three areas that we're gonna be removing, the urban future, are basically areas that we already approved CPAs in the past, or the CPA was denied, but the, the PUD or the zoning was approved, so we are doing this just to update and to make it. So, it's the east of South Council Road, and south of Southwest 74th Street, west of South Sarah Road, and south of Northwest 164th Street, and east of North Manton Road, and south of Northwest 164th Street. So, here you can see them in the map, these two little areas on the north, and here by the airport. So, here you can see them a little more in detail. We're gonna remove these four TODs. The main reason for it is that there's not any planned transit or anything for these areas. In the next update, we're gonna add other areas that we think is more appropriate to have the TOD layer on those areas. So, it's basically North Rockwell Road and Northwest Pressway, the North Council Road and Northwest Pressway, North Black Wilder Road and Highland Park Boulevard, North Pennsylvania Avenue, and with Return Road. And of course, we're adding to the new annexation, we added the urban low with the EM layer, the employment layer, to the new annexation, that happened in east of North Gregory and South Northwestern Street. We updated the service map, the sewer. As development moves, moves, the sewer gets farther. Here, you can see a little bit of the difference here in the northwest area, mostly, and the southwestern area of the city are the two areas with the mayor changes for sewer. Water is very similar, the northwestern and the, is the most, is the area with the mayor changes. For the emergency services, we took in consideration the station that is coming to the northwest, the new fire station, that one is already approved, and the funding is there, the construction we hope is gonna start soon. So, we did not took in consideration any of the stations that are proposed, we're only taking consideration the ones that are already funded, and they're already, ready to go. So, that's gonna take, and you're probably gonna see changes in CPAs of that area because of the updated service maps. So, some of that area open now for, for development, some of that urban future. The riparian area, we took in consideration a little better the flood maps, so we updated the riparian area, and we had a little bit of the data for the flood in the city. The indicators, we added the five-year actual indicators. This was a column that we added, we already discussed as indicators, like, like I mentioned before. If you need any more details about this, I can send you the presentation that we, we did back then, or I have no issue, we can sit down and we can discuss them again. And of course, updating basically the, every CPA, every update, we updated and amended history. And that's it. So, the recommendation is for you to adopt the resolution and approve the update. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, we're just ready for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution amending the comprehensive plan.
A motion to approve the resolution. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen, please cast your votes.
No vote.
And that item is approved. That was the last item on the docket. We'll move on to additional items. Communications report, planning commission committees? Nothing. Planning commission members?
Dan.
Anything on the right? Anything on the left?
No.
All right. Planning department?
Nothing.
Municipal councillor's office?
Public administration.
Thank you. I see no citizens to be heard. We are adjourned, thank you.